Good morning. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We're going to call this meeting to order. And a roll call, please.
Supervisor Lavier.
Good morning. Here.
Good morning. Supervisor Garrel.
Here.
Supervisor Parvin.
Here.
Supervisor Lopez.
Here.
Chair Long.
Here. We are all in attendance. Thank you. It's a fabulous day. And next up we have is our Pledge of Allegiance and Supervisor Garrel.
For which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, we have our meeting minutes for approval for the April 9th meeting. Are there any changes or a motion? I'll move approval.
This item was moved by Supervisor Parvin and seconded by Supervisor Lavier. Please vote. Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next up, we have our agenda review with Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair Long. Good morning Supervisor staff and all the attendants today. I am pleased to report that there are no items for agenda review today. Thank you.
We are fast and efficient today. Love it. Are there any other changes based on those supervisors? If not, a motion to approve the agenda. But also, before we do that, are there any Levine Act reporting that needs to be done? Hearing none. A motion to approve the agenda.
So we're approving the agenda.
Yes.
As presented.
As presented, yes.
Thank you. Moved by Supervisor Lopez and seconded by Supervisor Parvin. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And that motion passes unanimously. Next up, we do, we already did a celebration of Earth Day and our resolution. And we had a great presentation here. But I wanted to follow up with our fabulous Santa Paula Unified School District. They are also doing a green schoolyards. And I thought that this was a fabulous program with grants from CalFire and just the, we have our whole item for planting trees and our general plan and all about being green. So we asked Kevin Olson, or I asked Kevin Olson, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, and Eric Berg, Principal of our Pacific Coast Land Design, to come today and speak to us in regards to our program. So if you could come to the podium, introduce yourself, and then we have your presentation.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Long. It's a pleasure to be here today. Again, my name's Kevin Olson. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services for Santa Paula Unified School District. And today, I'm here with Eric Berg of Pacific Coast Land Design. We're here to present our green schoolyards grant, which will be affecting three of our schools. A little bit about the grant. The grant administrator's CalFire. So it was about $7.4 million from CalFire. The applicants who are available were cities, counties, school districts, and other local agencies. The purpose of the grant is to reduce the carbon footprint of schoolyards, to produce new green spaces for our students to play, and to reduce the heat impact of asphalt surfaces and hard, non-permeable surfaces. So our strategy in writing the grant, of course, plant lots of trees, produce some outdoor learning spaces for our students to get outside of the classroom, enjoy this beautiful Southern California weather that we have, to reduce the asphalt. And in Santa Paula, we don't have a ton of asphalt on all of our campuses, but we do have some really large turf fields. And so, Southern California, we're always looking to reduce our water usage. So we were also hoping to reduce some of just the turf fields that weren't really utilized, highly utilized, and so reduce our water consumption a little bit there, too. Of course, we are looking to do some stormwater improvements and improve the ADA access across the campuses, especially in regards to accessing the play areas for our students. A little bit, again, about the money of the grant. It was about $7.4 million. You can see it's divided up pretty evenly between three campuses. So our Glen City Campus Elementary School, which is our largest elementary school, Blanchard School, and Barbara Webster School are the three schools that will be affected by this green schoolyards grant. They're also our three largest campuses. So it made sense for those three campuses to be the first, hopefully, of a few that will be touched by this grant as we continue to put in for more rounds of this grant. And as mentioned earlier, one of the highlights, the top two reasons for this grant were to plant trees and to sequester carbon. So you can see, as part of the calculation of our grant, we plan to plant over 350 trees across the three schools. And the calculation is over 1.5 million pounds of carbon that will be sequestered over 50 years in those trees. And I'll hand it off to Eric to talk a little bit about the design that's going into these projects.
Good morning Supervisors. Again, my name's Eric Berg. I'm a principal landscape architect with Pacific Coast Land Design here in Ventura. We're right downtown. We do a lot of work with local agencies across the board. Here in Ventura, we did Kellogg Park over on the Avenue, the new inclusive playground at the Royal Verde. We do work with the county. We're working on several projects right now, both active transportation, parks, public spaces, and we do a lot of work with school districts. We also help write grant applications for a lot of our agencies and clients that we work with. And that was the partnership that we developed with Santa Paula Unified, to help them write the grant for this project to CalFire, helping them strategize not only what to apply for, but which schools to apply for, so that they could pull in as much of the resources available as possible. A little bit about what green schoolyards are. Kevin talked a little bit about it, but its primary thing as far as this grant is remove asphalt, plant trees. And so this is an example, actually, up in Oakland, where you can see how a existing asphalt playground was transformed through one of these green schoolyard projects. Just an example of what we're hoping to do in this project, add playgrounds, natural play spaces, outdoor classrooms. But one of the big things is, like you said, reducing asphalt and reducing those surfaces that cause heat. Here in Ventura, foggy day like this, not that heat. You go to Santa Paula on a hot day like this, those playgrounds are oftentimes 10 degrees hotter than the local surrounding areas. And oftentimes, that is even more severe in our disadvantaged communities. So a little bit about some of what these improvements might look like and what they are, shade for trees, some beautification on the campus, but also, how do you integrate these improvements with the curriculum and the learning opportunities that schools can provide? So providing outdoor learning spaces, places to learn about food production, outdoor classrooms, sensory play environments, so kids can get tactile with the natural improvements, as well as increasing or focusing opportunities for the active recreation. As Kevin mentioned, a lot of schools have these vast areas of turf that is used for some PE, but not all of it. So trying to really focus those areas where it is being used to conserve water and also conserve other resources. This is just an example of one of the kind of very early conceptual designs for, this was Glen City, one of the three campuses. I'm not going to show you all of them, but really kind of shows some of how we're going to get to these, you know, we're hoping 350-plus trees on the campus, while also improving access to existing campus improvements, hopefully creating some circulation and providing some more social amenity areas. We're right now very early in the design process. We started in January. We're in the early schematic design process and engaging with the schools. As Kevin mentioned, this grant has a timeline. Right now, this has to be done by March of 2026, which is a very aggressive timeline for projects that require DSA as they're essentially permitting an approval path hold. So this year is essentially designed. Next summer is going to be a big construction year. And so with that, love to answer any questions or, yeah, thanks.
And I just really want to appreciate the time and effort and thoughtfulness. Santa Paula, when it starts to get the fall, summer, it's hot. It's 100. And those little ones are like, where do we go to hide from this heat? And so I know that the trees are such a great shade aspect as also with just cooling for the area. So really just appreciate the thoughtfulness of going after grants. That is one-time money that is out there that we really need to, well, we do a great job at Ventura County, I think, of getting grants and utilizing this. So I just wanted to highlight it. Supervisors, any comments, questions?
Quick question.
Yes, please. Supervisor Parvin.
You're working with CalFire, because we're hearing from a lot of different individuals in the county that they're being told to remove trees because of the lack of being able to get homeowners insurance. So I thought I'd just bring that up. I'm sure you have CalFire right there. So I'm sure you're working with them. But any thoughts on that?
That is a great observation. CalFire is the administrator of this grant. As you know, many jurisdictions have many branches. I can't guarantee they're always talking to one another. What I can say about these three school campuses is that they are not in high fire hazard severity zones, meaning tree reduction, fuel load reduction is not a priority at these campuses, which would be a conflict with the grant priorities. So I'm sure there are schools in other jurisdictions that got this grant that have that conflict, but these are not one of them.
Well, that's good news. That's wonderful.
Right. And we were up at the state just last week, and we were talking about home hardening and how to be able to keep fire insurance or to mediate some of that. That's where they're asking for a distance between the houses and the trees to mitigate some of the hazards that would happen and reduce the fire incidents, hopefully. So that's always a good question.
It's really, it's really a great plan. I really enjoyed seeing it, and I'm happy to see it. Like, if we were kids again, wouldn't it be fun?
Yes, yes. So thank you so much. Really do appreciate it. And thank you for your moment of inspiration.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have is our consent items. And I believe we have a couple speaker or clerk. Let's go to our public speakers first. How many do we have?
Good morning Chair Long. We currently have four speakers for three items.
Okay, so let's give them three minutes.
Okay.
And then we'll start with that.
All right. Thank you very much. So it looks like our first speaker is going to be for item 12. We have Kathy Morgan, who's here in person.
Good morning Supervisor CEO Johnson and Council Tiffany North. My name is Kathy Morgan. I am a resident of Ventura and co-chair of Morgan. I am a resident of Ventura and co-chair of Voter Services for the League of Women Voters of Ventura County. I have been authorized today to speak on behalf of the league by our current president. The league is a nonpartisan organization with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy. The league has a long history of supporting voting rights and working to ensure free, transparent, and accessible elections, voting being a fundamental principle to make and all, excuse me, all eligible Americans deserving the equal opportunity to make their voices heard in our democracy. Many of our members have had the opportunity to tour our Ventura County Election Office, as well as to speak with former registrar voters Mark Lund and our current registrar Michelle Ascencion. We have been impressed with the diligence and hard work of the Elections Office to make sure that all eligible ballots are counted and have the utmost confidence in the safety and security of our elections in Ventura County. We consider ourselves lucky to live in a county with a registrar of voters as professional and transparent as ours. She has made every effort to explain step by step the decisions made and the processes followed during the various phases of the election process, many of which are mandated by the state. Today, as the election offices present the election certification of the March 5th primary election, we offer kudos to Michelle and her team for running a safe, secure, transparent election conducted in compliance with state law. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Our next speaker is going to be for item 22. We have Cecilia Casey.
Cece.
You can also please adjust the mic so we can hear you.
Good morning Chair Kelly Long, and we're the Supervisors. I prepared a five-minute article, as I did not see a three-minute timeframe on the internet, so I just am breaking my article up unless you would allow me to go the five minutes now, but that's up to you.
You have your three minutes, and you're using it currently, because I have to be fair to everybody.
That's fine. Thank you for that. State oversight, accountability, and compassion resulted in the passage of 2024 Proposition 1 to provide treatment for individuals with severe and persistent neurobiological brain disorders like schizophrenia and bipolar. The emphasis is on housing treatment facilities, emergency psychiatric treatment, and beds for the homeless or those at risk of homelessness. In sharp contrast, the 2004 Mental Health Service Act left oversight and accountability to counties. The MHSA intent was to prioritize individuals with severe neurological brain disorders who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. Without the state oversight and accountability mandate, leadership thwarted opportunities to maintain and add infrastructure necessary to effectively treat this vulnerable population. In 1996, our loved one suffered from a cellular neurobiological brain disorder, was hospitalized, discharged, and placed in a transitional recovery model to integrate clients into the community. Unfortunately, our loved one was medication-resistant and lacked insight into his treatment needs. While living at Board and Cares, three more IPU hospitalizations occurred. In 2003, our family member returned homeless to Ventura, was hospitalized and discharged to room and boards without treatment. Our family member wandered off frightened, cognitively impaired and confused, found by police sleeping in a lemon grove where they assisted in a 5150 hold to the IPU hospital, then discharged with hotel vouchers. Terrified, cognitively impaired, our loved one moved around daily fearing great bodily harm. We were all traumatized by these events. On another occasion, I reported our loved one missing. Police found our family member in Fillmore seven days later, cold, fatigued, confused, hungry. They assisted in another 5150 grave disability hold at the IPU, conserved and placed out of county in an IMD. In 2004, and after six more hospitalizations, our loved one returned near family to one of two permanent unlocked MHRCs. Do I have to quit now?
Thank you Cecilia. Your three minutes are up.
And thank you. We have you noted to come back at the public comment.
Yes.
Thank you. So just hold that spot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So our next two speakers are going to be for item 35. They're joining us today on Zoom. We have Eric Kristin, who I see has been promoted. Eric, if you unmute your mic, turn on your camera. You have three minutes to give your comment.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Thank you. My name's Eric Kristin. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment and Construction. We were formed 25 years ago by union and non-union construction firms to oppose discriminatory and wasteful project labor agreements. We've been working with the county for going on 12 years now to try and keep you from finding a solution to a nonexistent problem in the form of a project labor agreement, but the county just recently voted to approve a PLA on your Santa Paula number 29 project, and today you have the results that are in. You have a lowest bid that's 22% over the engineer's estimate, which was predictable because you've limited competition and increased costs by just having people who simply won't bid your projects. What was most interesting and what is most vexing is that the status of this first PLA project is not mentioned in the staff report. The bid results are not provided in the staff report, and the reason for the rejection of the lowest bidder as non-responsive is not given. So what we would like to do is have this information made available. I have no idea why it wouldn't be made available. I mean, I have my suspicions why it's not made available, but this is something that should be made available to the public. So we'll be reaching out to seek that information so we can make a full and qualified understanding of just what happened on this particular bid, and the PLA itself has not been made public. I'm assuming it's just you've read one PLA, you've read them all, it's going to be a standard fair PLA. But again, that's something that should have been included. So we will be seeking out that information, because the public needs to be made aware of all the details of this first trial project that was placed under a union project labor agreement. So again, 22% over the engineer's estimate in an era of hyperinflation in the construction industry that's never been seen before, project labor agreement just made it that much more difficult to get to bidders that are necessary for the project, as you will see and are seen. And we did want to point out the fact that that data was not included in the staff reports, and think that it should be so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Eric for your comment. Our next speaker is going to be Dave Everett. Dave, I see you've been promoted. You have three minutes to give your comment.
Great, thank you. Hi, my name's Dave Everett, and I'm with the Western Electrical Contractors Association. WICA has a statewide apprenticeship training program where we train electrical apprentices, and unfortunately, none of our apprentices are going to be able to work on these projects under a project labor agreement because of the discriminatory parts of a project labor agreement that are inherent in every single one of them. It discriminates against all those apprentices, and it discriminates against 80% of contractors in the state of California. So eight out of 10 contractors aren't able to bid, or they're able to bid, but there's all these extra price increases for them that aren't applied to union contractors. And so you end up with only 20% of the folks bidding, and that's why you end up with a 22% higher bid on the project. And so I just wanted to kind of outline some of the reasons why you're seeing such an increase in the bid amounts. It's because for the 80%, or I mean, if you look at the Department of Labor stats, it's almost up to 90% of non-union contractors that bid on these projects, that they have to pay into their own healthcare account, and they have to pay into the union healthcare account, even though their workers won't be able to use the union healthcare account because they're not vested. They have to pay into the union benefit account and their own benefit account, even though their workers won't be able to use the benefit account because they won't have been in the union at all, and they won't have worked enough hours to be vested in the benefit program. And so for them, it's just an extra cost. And then worst of all, or to me, it seems like worst of all, there's a limit on how many of their own workers they can use on the project. And so sometimes it's three, sometimes it's up to wow, seven. And so if you hire seven of your own workers, you have to hire seven of the union workers. And so, you know, a lot of times you can't count on the quality of work, or if you can count on the quality of work, you know, there's certain folks who feel like maybe the union workers are working to undermine the project they're working on. And so you just can't have confidence in the level of quality you're providing. And so because of those reasons, 80, 90% of the non-union contractors aren't bidding on these jobs, and that's why you're seeing the 22% increase. And so it feels like the county is not being honest, as the previous speaker said, when you don't mention that this is the first project labor agreement job that's been bid by the county, and you don't mention that, you know, why the lowest bidder was non-responsive, and you don't provide the bid results, and, you know, there's several things here where it seems like you're not being honest with the public as far as that this is the first project labor agreement. This is why you're receiving so few bidders. And the next thing you're going to see is that all the goals in your project labor agreement, your local goals, when you exclude 80 or 90% of the market, you're not going to hit those goals either. You're not going to hit, if you have veteran goals, or, you know, whatever made up goals that we're using.
Thank you, Dave, for your comment. Chair Long, that concludes the public comment for our consent agenda.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. Are there any questions or comments from our board? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Thanks Madam Chair. Some questions were raised related to the access to public documents, and I just wanted to see if County Council could opine on whether those documents are available and whether we can...
I would have to defer to the Fire Department on that one.
Yeah, thank you. We may not be able to answer that right now.
Right, but if it's a public document and it's titled under the Public Records Act, it would be released. So we've heard the comments, and we'll work with the department on that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good questions. All right, it has been first and seconded. Go ahead.
Moved by Supervisor LeVere, seconded by Supervisor Lopez. Please vote.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comments about transparency. I think that's extremely important for all of us. So that motion is approved unanimously, and we will now go on to public comments.
Thank you Chair Long.
How many do we have there?
We have a few speakers for this item.
Okay.
We currently have six.
Okay, so give them each the three, and if there's someone who's already spoken, then she gets...
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay. Thank you.
You can do that. Thank you. Just as a reminder to members of our public who wish to address the board today with live public comment on any agenda item, please visit Ventura.org/BOScomment for participation information and instructions. For in-person public comment, please check in with the deputy clerk at the entrance of the boardroom. If you wish to make comments, you must be in the boardroom, or if you're participating remotely, you must be connected to the meeting via Zoom or telephone before the close of the public comment period for that agenda item. Request to make live public comment on an agenda item will be accepted until the public comment period for each agenda item is complete. For our remote participants, please accept the prompt to be promoted and unmute your mic when it's your turn to speak. And for all public comments, the in-person speakers present in the boardroom will be called upon first, followed by remote participants. At the discretion of the Chair, general public comment regarding county-related matters that are not listed on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board may be moved to the end of the meeting. And our first speaker is going to be Cece Casey, and I will reduce your time to two minutes. So if you proceed to the podium, you can finish your public comment.
So Cece, just finish the rest of your comments. You have two more minutes.
I'm sorry.
You have two more minutes to finish the comments that you had.
Yes, thank you. The MHRC licensing agreement on Lewis Road provided effective evidence-based treatment where our loved one thrived, and it was a very happy time for our family. I was approached by a NAMI Mental Health Board member to serve on the Mental Health Board and represent families. I was appointed in 2005 and eagerly accepted. I studied the Mental Health Service Act intent to prioritize individuals with severe neurological brain disorders who are homeless or at risk of homelessness. I trusted evidence-based medical standards would be adopted as defined by law in the welfare and institution codes. However, leadership had other designs and began dismantling. The MHRC licensing safeguards dishonored the permanent housing agreement and downgraded services and programs for them. It was apparent to me without effective treatment, punitive enforcement would follow. It did. Our loved one was shuffled between jail and hospital, violated, abused, and harmed. On the horizon was a degree of justice. Our loved one was adjudicated and placed in and out of county IMD, and spent the next 13 years with NSIPI that specializes in the treatment of people with severe and persistent mental illness, using an evidence-based practice treatment model. Our loved one resides in assisted-living licensed facility with an effective ACT team to address functional impairment with treatment needs. With recent passage of Proposition 1 and state oversight and accountability, it is time to reinstate the permanent unlocked MHRC licensing agreement and bring our loved one back to effective treatment. Thank you.
Thank you Cece.
Thank you Cece for your comment. Our next speaker is going to be Kayagula Thomas, followed by James Greenfield and Wendy Cole.
Good morning. My name is Kayagula Thomas, and I am here representing Start Animal Rescue. Today, I'd like to talk about trust and service. I think that most would agree that Mahatma Gandhi was the embodiment of the word service, and it is he who said, "I hold that the more helpless a creature, the more entitled it is to the protection by man from the cruelty of man." I ask, what creature is more helpless and more entitled to protection than one who is held in a cage, completely reliant on their caregivers for food, enrichment, exercise, good health, and their life itself? Please, visit an animal shelter. Visit our shelter. Look into their eyes, and you will see the trust that these voiceless animals have put into the hands of the people who care for them. Trust that is broken every time they are hungry, denied medical care, left in their kennels for weeks on end, or turned away at the door and told to be put back into the street. We, the people of Ventura County, trust that you will represent the people of this county and serve the needs of the entire community, especially the voiceless. Trust means communication. Trust means transparency. So I stand here before you, and I ask for your help and your trust. Please trust that we speak the truth. Please trust that we will always serve the voiceless. Please conduct that audit of the shelter that was discussed. Please make an unannounced visit to the shelter and see for yourself. Please truly see what's going on. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your attention. Have a good day.
Thank you Kayah. Our next speaker is going to be James Greenfield, followed by Wendy Cole.
So what is the wind speed of courage in here today? How many more email requests are needed to schedule a discussion item to debate actions to secure the November election? Is the undisputed fact that there's a grand effort in California and across the country to take down the integrity of our election system and to permanently corrupt the process so that the will of the people can be manipulated? One can deny this, but it does not change the truth. The question is how much, to what degree, do members of this board care and who will take action? This is a battle between good and evil. If one dares to bring up a religion, God or the Bible, and your eyes will start to roll, right? But we pledge allegiance to the flag, sorry, one nation under God. You were given a copy of the Constitution. Our constitutional rights come from God, not man or government. Is our elected servants responsibility to make sure the government does not violate our God-given rights, which include voting? You approve allocation of millions of these at each meeting, which on it says, "In God we trust," yet eyes roll when we dare to bring up God. Quite a paradox. You control many aspects of the scales of justice in our county. What is the gauge for what is right and wrong? What are hands laid on when oaths of office are taken or should be? right and wrong? What are hands laid on when oaths of office are taken or should be? Simi Valley last week, revival meetings were held at Life Church for six days, a festival of miracles with evangelist Ankit Ranbobo. Deaf ears were opened, blind eyes now see, and crippled walk, the same is needed in this room. And it will take a miracle of courage for ears to be open and connect to consciences, for eyes to see and connect to minds and options, and for legs to move to take tangible action, and for what is wrong to be made right. You were voted in because voters took a step of faith to believe that you would do the right thing when issues were presented before you. Well, here's your moment. And maybe it was just blind faith rooted in no convictions. We will soon know the answer. And so I do pray for that miracle, that the God of heaven, the Creator, Father of the Passover lamb we celebrate, Redeemer of our souls, and the Author of what is good, rain your mercy, courage, strength, fortitude, and wisdom on this board to stand up for what is right. May corruption and evil pass over this land and be expelled and not find a home in this county. May holy conviction rise in hearts, and may it not be said that evil prevailed because good men and women failed to do anything. Blessing God our supervisors, in the name of the Messiah, Jesus, I pray.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is going to be Wendy Cole.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I my name is Wendy Cole, for the record. I sent an email to all of you yesterday regarding voter integrity, so I won't go over all my points, but I just wanted to implore you in person to really consider voter integrity that would be acceptable to all sides of the aisle, because this is foundational to our democratic republic. And if we're going to have any trust in our elections, it's essential that some basic things are addressed, and I'm just going to name three of them really quickly. That is voter ID verification. It's essential for almost everything else in society, getting on a plane, whatever. I think that we need to go back to that. I would really implore you to initiate that requirement again. Also to eliminate the unsecured drop boxes, because we've seen there have been allegations, whether they're true or not, that people have cheated, stuffed drop boxes, whatever, and just to shut down any illusion or, you know, thought that there could be cheating done. Please just, that's a very simple thing to to do. Please stop those drop box, those unsecured drop boxes. And then lastly, and this is this is probably huge, but to secure transparency of the vote tabulations, whatever it takes in all regards, whether it's hand counting, oversight of the computerized, you know, counting tabulation. Anyways, I'm not a public speaker, and but I appreciate your time, and I I really hope that you consider this and to implement these measures. And I think I I speak for many, many people who weren't able to make it here today and are very concerned about this issue. It's the talk of the town. All right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your your help.
Thank you for your comment. So we're going to transition over to Zoom. We have a few speakers. We're going to hear from Bruce Vicker, followed by Veronica Sanchez, and then Kristin Riz. So Bruce McVicker, I see that you've been promoted. If you unmute your mic, you'll be able to give your comment.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Voting is classified as critical infrastructure and is a national security issue. The use of black box vote tabulation computers will always be a national security problem. America can be overtaken by electronically hijacking the will of the people without the kinetic wars of the past. Dominion voting machines are easily compromised without detections. They have even stored computer decryption keys in an easily accessible format that hackers can use to take control of an electronic of an electronic voting system. The voting computers also contain critical parts made in countries like China that routinely use components such as motherboards and microchips to provide secret backdoor access to voting systems via remote transceivers. The More Days, More Ways Voter Choice Act is an open invitation to fraud, cheating, and possibly a military takeover. Ventura County needs a security-centered voting process having the following: one day in-person voting with absentee upon request, citizen-only voters with picture ID and proof of address, paper voter rolls maintained at the precinct level, voting with paper ballots on security paper at the precinct level, hand-counted paper ballots with video. The Voters' Choice Act is a desecration of what our nation's founders had in mind when they landed on Plymouth Rock, won the Revolutionary War, wrote the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. It's a slap in the face to approximately 1.3 million Americans who have died in service for our great country. In order for our nation, the United States of America, to remain a free nation, America requires a fair election system. A fair election system requires an auditable process to restore trust. Recent countrywide elections in El Salvador, Argentina, and Taiwan were conducted on a single day using voter ID and hand-counted paper ballots. The results were available that evening. After changing back to hand-counted paper ballots from computerized systems, the prosperity and the well-being of the Argentina and El Salvador citizens has greatly improved. These countries have regained their sovereignty, and their people are thriving again. Statutes for hand-counting ballots may be old, but they still exist. Many counties across America still hand-count ballots, and others are changing back. Recently, Missouri's Osage County transitioned to hand-counting ballots and were able to count the votes and report results at the same time as the voting machines. Hand-counting saves time and money, gives same-day results, and is more transparent.
Thank you, Bruce, for your your comment. Our next speaker is going to be Veronica Sanchez, followed by Kristin Riz and Tom Harkins. Veronica, I see that you've been promoted. So if you unmute your mic, you'll be able to give your comment.
Hello, can you hear me well?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I am here today remotely, but still as a voice for those who cannot speak for themselves, the animals of Ventura County. Our county's animal services are facing a critical issue, as I have spoken before about, the decision between killing animals or providing them with the care and compassion they deserve. As taxpayers, we entrust our hard-earned funds to ensure the well-being of these animals. Yet there's a dire need for these resources to be utilized effectively. It's really disheartening to witness the lack of action in providing the necessary care and alternatives to euthanasia. One of my friends, who currently is also a rescue volunteer, had mentioned during our last meeting about a dog who we rescued, who is now being trained through the search and rescue program. A dog who was on the list to be killed might one day repay the favor of being saved back and save one of our lives or one of the lives of our loved ones. I am encouraged. I do want to mention that I am encouraged by the progress I have witnessed lately. I do see that the Board of Supervisors is beginning to listen to our concerns, and steps are being taken towards positive change, and that makes me really happy. Yet the journey is far from over. We must continue to advocate for the humane treatment of the Ventura County animals. We have the funds. We have the resources, and it's imperative that they are utilized to its fullest potential. I recently pulled up the report. I didn't see the March one, but this one was actually, this was the February report for a nonprofit. And for the Animal Services Foundation of Ventura County, their total revenue was 2.4 million, and their expenses for that month was 180,000. So I'm just wondering, like, we wonder, like, if we have the funds, we have the resources, so we just need to put them to good use. I also, lastly, just wanted to mention, in addressing the timing of these meetings, the inconvenience they pose for a large population prevents many from participating. While remote participation is an option, it's not always feasible for those who are working. Yes, we can send our concerns and comments via email. However, there is a greater impact from being there physically. I'm currently, like, taking my break, hiding right now from work. Hopefully, my boss doesn't hear, but it just, you know, a thought, maybe changing one of the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Veronica. Our next speaker is going to be Kristin Riz on Zoom, and then Tom Harkins here in person. Kristin, I see you've been promoted. If you unmute your mic, you'll have three minutes to give your comment.
As well?
Hi, Kristin. We can hear you.
Good morning. I'm sorry I could not see your faces this morning, but you know, I'm a regular Kirsten Riz. Hello, I'm here. So again, I'm here with the animal services community to continue to request transparency and community engagement in the hiring process and overall practices at VCAS. I wanted to quickly again voice my request for approval of the request by VCAS for funds to construct a new shelter. VCAS continues to be at capacity. When all kennels are full and dozens of animals are brought in each week, what is VCAS to do without more space? Many of us are part of a no-kill alliance here in Ventura County, and as much as we request improvement at VCAS, we still understand that if there are no more kennels, what options do they have? We do not want to see animals turned away or euthanized. While VCAS does make an effort to avoid euthanasia, if they are consistently full, please consider what are they to do? Dogs that are unruly but potentially adoptable, what we have seen, become considered unadoptable and are on the euthanasia list. So while they try to maintain their their no-kill policy, we find that behaviors that could be correctable seem to be considered, you know, with dogs, unadoptable. So as new animals come come in, they have to make space in one way or another, and they really don't have very many options if there is no space at all. I also just wanted to voice the importance of transparency transparency and community engagement. As we got to see from the presentation this morning about the Cal Fire Grant, that got me thinking, the more, you know, of course, many of us are here with our experience from volunteering and working with animals. We bring a lot in that capacity, but what we may not talk about a lot is our professional capacity and, you know, without transparency and community engagement, community, excuse me, the Animal Services Commission and you guys as well may not know the other things that we can bring to the table. For example, I myself am a grant writer for cities and municipalities, and I know that there is at least one other grant writer on our team of regular faces that visit you. So the more information that is shared among us, the more we can participate and share our resources so that we can work together to build a better place for our animals. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Kristin. Our next speaker is here in person, Tom Harkins.
Hi, yes, good morning, everybody. I just wanted to support, give my, you know, yeah, give my support for the group of people that are looking for election integrity and and the ballot boxes and and all the different things and machines. I I do believe that, I'm not sure, I don't know that much about county county business, but I do believe that there is, with the cities at least, there is lots of autonomy when it comes to state and how the state works, but I I would like to see a little more autonomy of our city, or I'm sorry, of our county and our cities when it comes to following all the all the mandates that come from the state. And I I support the people that are looking for fair elections. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Tom. Chair Long, I believe that concludes the public comment for this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's quite a few different comments that we have on our public comment, but I really appreciate everyone's time and energy to share your concerns with us, whether it's here in person, on Zoom, or through email. We do receive them and really do appreciate your your comments. I wanted to make sure I said that today, because I know not every email we respond to, but I do know that we receive it and we understand it. So thank you very much. Okay, we have a time certain is at nine thirty, and if we could, I would like to just do a couple of the regular agenda items really quick. So if we could do forty-four, please?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Item forty-four is a recommendation from my office to reappoint two individuals as District One appointees to the Behavior Health Advisory Board, both Cheryl Heitman and Genevieve Flores-Harow, who have both been very involved, engaged, effective members of the BEHAB, and I would love to reappoint them each to a an additional term. So I'd make that motion. That works.
Take that back. Taking it off. Do it again.
So many people support this. I just want to say, she's fabulous and does a wonderful job. So thank you for bringing her name to reappointment. Or two of them, apologize, both of them.
Item forty-four has been moved by Supervisor Leveer and seconded by Supervisor Harbin. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And forty-five?
Thank you, Madam Chair Long. Forty, item forty-five is a recommendation to cancel the July ninth, two thousand twenty-four Regular Board of Supervisors meeting. It's come to our attention that there is a holiday right before that, and with the SIRE system, being able to make sure board members and the public have information and materials well before that date and order review may present some challenges, and we just want to make sure everyone has enough time to review everything. So we are bringing forward the recommendation to cancel the July ninth meeting and happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this.
And and Dr. Johnson, thank you very much for bringing this up. We didn't catch that in our regular calendar schedule of all the planning that goes on before it. So I appreciate that. I'm sure our employees appreciate it too, as long as along with our our public. Any other questions or concerns, if not a motion?
Item forty-five moved by Supervisor Leveer, seconded by Supervisor Lopez. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to do forty-six. And Ms. Marjorie Deal is always here for a very long time, and I just thought I would give you a little gift today.
Thank you, Chair Long. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chair Long. Good morning, Supervisors. Good morning, CEO Johnson. I'm Marjorie Deal, your manager of classification and compensation. Today, I'm here before you with a recommendation to establish five representative classifications, which are detailed in the board letter. All of these classifications have been approved by SEIU. The emergency room technician classification is an industry standard and clearly reflects the duties and responsibilities of the position within the emergency department, which are currently performed by nursing assistants. We anticipate an annual cost increase of approximately 32,000, including benefits, for eleven incumbents who will be promoted to the new classification. The APCD accountant one and two, these classifications mirror the existing county classifications of accountant one and two, and will have the same salary ranges respectively. APCD has a need for these new level accountants to provide flexibility in recruiting new employees while maintaining the opportunity for career advancement. The HS Veterans Claims Officer three and four, these new classifications will address workload, staff development, and retention challenges, and will provide career advancement opportunities for incumbents within the series. There is no immediate fiscal impact, as the current budget has sufficient funds to cover any additional costs. Promotional recruitments will be held to fill future opportunities. And with that, I'm open to questions.
Are there any questions? And seeing none, motion, oh, is there any public comments?
Chair Long, there are no requests to speak for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. So if so, a motion to approve, please. Staff recommendations.
Item forty-six moved by Supervisor Lopez, seconded by Supervisor Garrel. Please vote.
Okay, thank you, and that passes. Thank you very much. So we will postpone items nine and ten till after our time certain. We have some wonderful people here today. We're going to start at forty-seven. We're gonna start at forty-seven, and as you, I get to pass this over to Supervisor Laverre.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And uh, item forty-seven is a, an annual thing that I'm uh, excited we all participate in every year, and that's uh, Take Five and Read to Kids Day, and I'm bringing forward this proclamation uh, this year to proclaim, uh, May third, two thousand twenty-four is Take Five and Read to Kids Day uh, in Ventura County. And I know we have uh, Ms. Petra Poles, who's our, the Executive Director, and I see a lot of your leadership staff back there as well. Good morning. Good to have you here. And uh, Ms. Poles is gonna be able to provide a little more about this year's uh, theme and uh, what we're hoping to accomplish this year. So uh, good morning, Petra.
Good morning. Oh, good morning, Chair Long, when she's back. Members of the board, Dr. Johnson, staff. Thank you so much for your time this morning to recognize the importance of early literacy by proclaiming May third as Take Five and Read to Kids Day. My name is Petra Poles. I'm the Executive Director at First Five Ventura County. We're the local public agency that's been established to administer taxes on tobacco products, and we take those revenues and invest them to improve outcomes for young children and their families. On May third at ten AM, over fifty celebrity readers will be reading to young children throughout Ventura County to kick off our eighth annual Take Five and Read to Kids campaign. This is an ongoing effort by First Five Ventura County to raise awareness about the importance of early literacy. This year's impressive lineup of readers includes Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, Assemblymembers Jackie Irwin and Steve Bennett, our county supervisors, many of our county department heads, um, various city council members, and of course, our most famous county chief, Dustin Gardner and Sherri Freihoff, who will demonstrate the reading of our uh, books next week at the, or this week at the kickoff breakfast. Um, Take Five and Read to Kids encourages parents and community members to become champions of early literacy to talk, read and sing with young children ages zero to five. All it takes is five minutes a day to read with a young child to support their early language and literacy development. So why is Take Five one of our key initiatives at First Five? We know that the first five years of life laid a foundation for success in school and in life. Studies have proven that when you talk, read and sing to children, starting at birth, you promote and support early language and literacy development. Talking throughout the day, reading aloud, telling stories, singing with the child um, helps develop pathways in the brain that are later used um, to, that are, that are the foundation for later uh, learning and school success. Children who engage in meaningful interactions in a loving and nurturing environment not only learn more words, but they also develop better social skills, emotional and cognitive skills, and all of those, of course, are critical to long-term health and well-being. And yet, in Ventura County, not even half of the children are read to every day. That's why Take Five is so important, and every single one of you can help us turn that statistic around. It only takes five minutes a day to read to a child today, tomorrow, and every day. For young children, it's not just about reading. It's also about early exposure to books that is beneficial for long-term academic achievements. About two-thirds of the families that we serve in our First Five programs do not speak English in their home as their primary language. It is known that kids who read in their home language, like Spanish in Ventura County, most of them, um, have an easier time learning to read in their second language, in English. However, many children don't have access to books in Spanish. We're helping address this concern by providing books, bilingual books, to all the children that are participating, as well as we're donating bilingual books to all the classrooms and programs that are part of our Take Five initiative. We want to make reading to your child, to a child, as commonplace as looking both ways when we cross the street. That is my dream. And here is what you can help me with my dream. Starting now, help us create a buzz. Post on social media with hashtag TakeFiveVC. Ask questions, which book you should read. Um, help us um, share pictures of yourself reading with children. Um, you can, of course, participate in Take Five and take lots of pictures that day of the reading and post those as well. Donating just fifty dollars covers the book for an entire preschool classroom. And those donations from the community allow us to purchase those bilingual books for all the children that are in preschool classrooms. Um, and help us raise awareness, not just on May third, but throughout the entire year to help elevate the importance of early literacy. And you can do that by talking, singing, reading with the children in your family, in the children in your neighborhood, your nieces, nephews, grandchildren. Um, wherever you can find the child, talk, read, sing with them. And lastly, please consider committing to Take Five next year on May first of twenty twenty-five. And with that, thank you for this morning's time and the opportunity to talk to you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Poles, and, and Take Five and Read is one of First Five's uh, signature events, and uh, one of the things you uh, do to really focus on early childhood literacy. But beyond that, I know First Five is just doing such amazing work in the community with uh, Neighborhood for Learning Centers uh, in locations across all of our districts, uh, Parents and Children Together classes focusing on stronger um, maternal and paternal relationships and family building. It's just, you do, and you and your team just doing incredible work. And so, uh, we, I know we're honoring you for this ev- event today, but everything you're doing is so important and so critical. And uh, just like to read just the last paragraph of this resolution, and we'd love to come down and present it to you. Um, but you know, in observance of May third, as Take Five and Read to Kids Day, we uh, as a Board of Supervisors and as a community, recognize the vital importance of the first five years of life for the well-being of children, families and society uh, as we seek to promote uh, early literacy. So thank you, and we'd love to come down. Or actually, any of my colleagues like to say anything, or we can go down and present this proclamation?
I'm just looking forward to reading to the kids.
Yeah. Yeah, you always get strong, strong participation from the Board of Supervisors, and it's just showing how much we appreciate what you do. Okay, well, let's go down. Thank you.
Just read for yourself, read for the kids. It's just a really good thing to do. Our next item we have is 48, which is our presentation proclaiming the week of 21 to 27 as Volunteer Appreciation Week. And leading this is Supervisor Parvin.
Thank you. Let's see, the Ventura County Medical Reserve Corps is a volunteer is a volunteer medical team sponsored through Ventura County Public Health and Ventura County Emergency Medical Services. It's a group of 67 volunteers with a combination of doctors, nurses, paramedics, EMTs, retired law, fire, and non-medical individuals who serve thousands of hours each year supporting our healthcare system countywide. MRC serves our community in a variety of capabilities, including finding first aid services across the county at numerous public events, serving on the healthcare agency's backpack medicine team, partnering with the human services agency's mass care and shelter team, delivering vaccinations with public health, continuously training in emergency response, and providing community outreach programs demonstrating sidewalk CPR, stop the bleed, emergency preparedness, and workforce growth initiatives in healthcare and EMS. Newer programs include mental health unit being developed to help fill gaps in the first responder community with peer support training. And team members have proudly served as docents at the VCMC with the Hope Summer Explorers Student Program. And in recognition of Volunteer Week, we are honored to recognize the Ventura County Medical Reserve Corps today. And I'd like to introduce Deputy Administrator Chris Rosa. Hopefully he's here. From the Ventura County Emergency Medical Services Agency, and he'd like to share a few words with you today.
Morning Chair Long, members of the board, Dr. Johnson. Our Ventura County Medical Reserve Corps volunteers are woven into the county of Ventura first responder community through the Ventura County Emergency Medical Services Agency, Public Health Department, and the Ventura County Healthcare Agency. We are proud to serve alongside the Medical Reserve Corps and are thrilled to celebrate them during the National Volunteer Appreciation Week. EMS would like to highlight a few of the volunteers that are being honored this week for their 15-year service awards. Holly Siri, a registered nurse. Judith Jasperson, retired respiratory therapist. Joining our most senior volunteer, Dr. David Perlmutter, who's reaching 18 years of volunteer service this year. The Ventura County MRC currently serves as the chairperson for the Southern California Medical Reserve Corps Alliance and diligently models their programs to be able to share at the local, the state, and the federal level to create stronger bonds with our regional units and respond to natural disasters as well as public health emergencies and man-made disasters. We invite you to explore volunteering with us today at the venturacounty.mrc.org. Thank you so much for recognizing our incredible volunteer team, Medical Reserve Corps team, who's here today with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to have all of you and to be recognized for all the great work that you're doing. Sometimes you may not feel as appreciated as you should, and so today we'd like to let you know how much we appreciate you. And we're going to come down and hand a certificate to you and love to have a picture with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are going to take just a quick break and we'll be back for our 10 o'clock. Thank you. Not rushing you guys out. I keep We're going to start back at the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending. So now we have is our proclamation of the April 2024 as DMV Donate Life Month in Ventura County. And I have Tom Monis, our Chief Internal Officer Affairs Officer, VP of One Legacy. Good morning, Tom.
Certainly. Oh, thank you very much and good morning to each of you on the board and all the staff. Thank you very much for having us back this year to recognize Donate Life Month, National Donate Life Month, and Donate Life California, the state donor registry, the pink dot in our driver's license. I believe, let's see. Find myself back here or not. Is this going to, it's not going to do that. Okay. They seem out of order. Okay. Well, I just No. No, I was missing the first slides, but I can talk around it. Never mind. If you put that. There was, it was another group from four or five slides for myself from One Legacy.
This one? Laurie? Is it this one?
Yep, that would be it. There were two that were, they were sent as one combined file, but that's okay. I can talk.
Thank you.
Happy to. Not to worry. Just to, I mentioned One Legacy. One Legacy is the organ procurement organization, Oregon Eye and Tissue Donation Agency, serving all of southern, pretty much Southern California and certainly Ventura County for the last 50 years. I can, am pleased to report this past year, we had a 13% increase in the number of lives saved through organ donation and managed to heal another, well, that was about 1,841 lives saved by organ donation last year alone and another 150,000 healed by tissue donation. So, and the vast majority of these transplants go to people who live here in Southern California. People, there were obviously a long list of people in need and only their lives are only saved and healed by people who choose to donate. The, at One Legacy, we are the agency that responds to referrals 24 hours a day, whether it's at the Ventura County Medical Center or Ojai, where Steve and I live, the hospital, community hospital there, or anywhere else in Southern California region to respond to referrals and give those who've chosen to register, you have the pink dot in their license, a chance to donate life, and those who haven't, give their families a chance to make something good come from their loss. And I tell you, One Legacy staff of over 450 staff members, our number one focus is the families that we serve, the donor families who've just lost someone but choose to make something good come from that. And we are very, very pleased to have the county of Ventura give us a chance to share this message today and help more people choose to give the gift of life and ensure that no one dies while waiting for that lifesaving gift. In part of sharing our story and celebrating this month, I'd like to ask Steve Weed, who is one of our One Legacy ambassadors and lives here in Ventura County, to share some of his stories.
I always have to adjust for height. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, board members. It's always great to be here speaking about this subject or anywhere. So thanks for inviting us back. I was here last year and the, one of the One Legacy staffers that's kind of new called me to make sure I knew how things were set up. And she asked me, well, did I know where I would be speaking? And so I smiled and said, well, there's three major buildings in the government complex. There is the Hall of Justice, there's the Hall of Administration, and there's the jail. And I know two of them intimately. And I paused and she laughed and I said, well, Tom and I did this last year, so it will be good. So again, thank you. As Tom and I were talking just before the comment came up, it's not all about me. And I could share my story all day long, but I want to share just a piece of that. It's about my friend Sarah. Sarah and I met a very long time ago. I was going through a divorce and looking for more gainful employment. And one of the things I did was to join a new church. And I met Sarah there. She's maybe 15 years older than I am, and she became kind of a mentor in some ways. We sang in the choir and that's how I met her. I should have stayed in the shower singing, but I digress. So, you know, she was a mentor in many ways to me. She moved to Tucson five or six years later, so we kind of lost contact for a while until I moved down to LA. And Sarah moved to Arizona for many reasons. When I got down here, I went over and visited her the first time and she took me down to Puerto Penasco. While she was in Oregon, she served as an ESL teacher, and that's what she was doing with the migrant community in Tucson. So it was really eye-opening to me. She also had the opportunity to reconnect with her daughter and reestablish a better relationship with her. And I went and ate Christmas dinner with her and her daughter. That was the year that my mom died. So we have a lot of strong connections that way. After I moved to LA, I met my current wife Bonnie. And she was really excited to be invited to our wedding because she knew that my first marriage was a difficult go. So we have a lot of connections. Let's see, let me see if I can do this clicker thing here. So she was also an artist, as you can see there, she did a lot of mixed media things and besides singing. So fast forward a little bit. In 2009, I had been on the transplant list for about a year. And as some of you may know, the transplant list is pretty extent, pretty lengthy in Southern California. So I had another friend in Phoenix and Sarah was in Tucson. And I thought, you know, I could do a list and maybe I get a transplant sooner in the Arizona market. And so I called Sarah up and said, hey, would you support me if I got my transplant in Phoenix? You have to understand Sarah grew up in Tennessee and that was part of her charm. So she said in her most affable voice, oh, Steve, I'd be happy to help you. You know, about five years ago, I got my transplant at the Mayo Clinic. And you could have pushed me over with a feather because I knew that she'd had some health problems and she was on a special diet. I had no idea that she'd been in kidney failure, more or less, even though as close as I thought I was to her. It's, well, that just wasn't Sarah's nature anyway. But she had had a transplant for five years and I didn't even know it. And so that's the message to all of us in part. You never know really who you meet and what their health condition is. And that's one of the reasons why I really valued Sarah so much is that, you know, we could talk about things like that at a very deep level. But I was still amazed that, you know, she could still have that so well-kept secret. Okay, so fast forward a little bit. In 2009, my kidneys had deteriorated to the point where I had started dialysis, like I said. And then after that point, you know, when I actually had my transplant, I had it in LA. And she came over to support me, met my two kids by that time, and it was just an all-around good time. So let's see. She also did several other things. She wrote her book on ESL teaching called The Gentle ESL Way. She participated in donate life functions in the Tucson area and just continued to live life fully. So in October of 2014, I made a very special trip to visit Sarah. It had been a while since I'd seen her in person. And when I got there, I started to just spend some time with her there on the patio. She had had a, well, not a defective, but a malformed ureter, which caused her a lot of UTIs. And at some point, she decided, you know, I don't want to have surgery again. And so apart from all the things that I'd seen in her life, I had a chance to be with her for a couple of hours, you know, in the last phase of her life. And so from that, I learned how I could be graceful and strong even in those last days. So I took this picture with Sarah's permission and shared it because a lot of people didn't even know she was sick then, you know? And so Sarah, through transplant, had an opportunity to live another 10 years fully. She reconnected with her family. She brought so much value to her students, and she will help the world. And so apart from all of the statistics and so forth, this is an example of an everyday person who's not a movie star, whose name you'll never see anywhere else, but she meant a great deal. And that extra time benefited so many people. You know, she was still getting birthday You know, she was still getting birthday wishes and commemorations, eight years on social media after she died. So I don't pretend to read Spanish, but just for the record, this is from one of her students. Hugs to heaven, a great human being. My affection and my heart always with you. So the gift that people give when they sign up to be an organ and tissue donor goes far beyond that person. Thank you for, you know, publicly bringing this to people's attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve, and really appreciate your story. It just resonates so much how important organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation is to those who are just in some dire straits and to really help and to continue the life that we all have for our loved ones. So I just wanted to say thank you very much. We have a resolution here. If the supervisors would like to say anything, I'd like to ask you all to come down. Dr. Johnson will take a photo. Next up, we have item fifty, which is our presentation proclaiming the week of April fifteenth to nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, is National Communication, Telecommunication Week in Ventura County. And we have some very special people. You want to come on down? Sheriff's Captain Steve Miklich, I think I said that wrong, and Fire Communications Center Battalion Chief Guillermo de la Rosa, and probably some other people, so if you could come to the podium, introduce yourself, and I will pass this on. I have two resolutions, just, you know. Speaking of Battle of the Badges that we had just yesterday, I know not to present just one, so.
May I ask who did win the Battle of the Badges?
You know, I think we're all winners. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it was a tie, okay.
I couldn't even choose which color sticker to put on my golf thing because I couldn't choose. So we'll regress, we'll talk about that, the staff comments, board comments, but good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Well, thank you, everybody, Chair Long, members of the board, Dr. Johnson, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. More importantly, thank you for recognizing our dispatchers for their special week. My name's Guillermo de la Rosa, Battalion Chief assigned to our Fire Communications Center. This year, our Dispatcher of the Year is Christopher Walsh.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, more than welcome.
I mean, I'm thinking, okay.
So in two thousand twenty-three, we had all of our supervisors submitted nominations for Dispatcher of the Year. Our agency examined all those nominations and selected Chris. When we're, when we're going through these nominations, there's certain virtues that we look for in our dispatchers. The first, first one is character. We look for dispatchers who conduct themselves in a professional manner, they carry themselves professionally, they treat others with respect, and they, they demonstrate through their actions that they really care about our team, they care about building up all of our dispatchers and our agency as a whole. We look for dispatchers who have a strong skill set. Number one, they're able to remain calm under pressure, as you can imagine. At times, the members of the public will call, and they'll have the worst day of their lives kind of playing out before them, and what they need to hear is a dispatcher who has a calming voice, who's able to bring some calm to their chaos and to be able to help coach them through these difficult times. We look for dispatchers who are multitaskers. I'm not kidding when I say that these dispatchers at times will be taking calls, and they'll be doing literally three to five additional tasks at the same time. We also look for dispatchers who are thinkers. We have a lot of technology, we're very fortunate to have technology that helps us through our day-to-day operations as dispatchers and as an agency, but at the end of the day, the best dispatchers are the ones who are able to pivot, they're able to make decisions, they're able to make adjustments to responses, they're able to anticipate what the needs are of our public and also what the needs are of all of our resources out in the field. And above and beyond, well, the last thing is that these dispatchers go above and beyond. They, they're not satisfied with their normal, you know, day-to-day job duties, they go above and beyond. They, they anticipate what our needs are as a team, and they look, look for opportunities to help build us up as an FCC team and as an organization. Chris Walsh embodies all of these things and then some. He's, he's one of our CTOs, Certified Training Officer. He's, he's trained countless dispatcher trainees, he's count, he's trained countless tenured dispatchers in addition to that. He's also a instructor, well, he's on a CalFire ECC team, so he's involved on the state level, he's beginning as an instructor, so he'll be not only teaching us as a team, but he'll also be teaching multiple agencies throughout the state of California and bringing that information back and making us stronger as a team. So with that being said, I'd also like to read a snippet from his supervisor's nomination that was sent to me. I think this, this, this very much so explains what I'm talking about with, when it comes to Chris Walsh. Lastly, and most importantly, I believe that Chris is the model for the type of employee we want in FCC and our department. He's always willing to help and can be counted on when given an assignment. He is honest, dedicated, and willing to do whatever is needed for us to succeed on a daily basis. I cannot think of a better candidate for Dispatcher of the Year than Chris Walsh. So with that being said, that he is our Dispatcher of the Year this year, and is very much earned, and we appreciate him very much.
So, Chris, we have a resolution for you, and we'll come down and bring it down to you, but I, I just had a highlight. As we're talking about dispatchers, there, oh, there it is, ha ha. I just wanted to state for each year, Public Safety Dispatchers and Supervisors at the Ventura County Fire Department Communication Center handled approximately two hundred thousand telephone calls, including seventy-five thousand nine-nine, nine-one-one calls in two thousand twenty-three. And if anyone has had a loved one call you and panicked and just needing emergency right there and then, if you go to any of our dispatch, whether it's sheriff or fire, what cool, calm demeanor everyone has. You would think, oh, my gosh, everyone's running around, we're trying to get it as fast as possible. No, it's slow, controlled thinking, and that is just huge because you're really calming the person on the other line down. I've witnessed it so many times, and not as many as you, definitely, but I just wanted to say my appreciation for it because it's just, it's a big accomplishment to do that for our community, and I just wanted to say thank you personally for that. Okay, the second up we have is our sheriffs.
Good morning. Thank you, board, for this day, this week, recognizing our dispatcher. I'm Captain Steve McCallik with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office. I've been with them for about thirty years. I've always had high regard for our dispatchers. I worked for a time as a deputy, as a call taker. It is definitely tough work, and they, they earn their keep and very much appreciate it. For the past two years, I've been a watch commander in our dispatch center, and I've gotten to work with our Dispatcher of the Year, who is Amber Anderson. She's not able to be here this, this, today. She worked last night, she's coming back tonight, so we're letting her get some rest. But I will pass on that, in the two years that I worked with Amber, I know she's definitely earned this award, and she remains calm, professional, and she's always proficient in her work. It's a pleasure having Amber in our dispatch communication center. She lives in our county, she lives in Thousand Oaks with her significant other and her three children. In her spare time, she enjoys reading, camping, and photography. She's been with the Ventura County Sheriff's Office since March of two thousand twenty, after coming to us, after working with Auctioner Police Dispatch for seven years. She was chosen by her peers and supervisors due to her hard work, friendly and calm demeanor, and dedication to the unit. She continues to amaze her colleagues when it comes to her ability to stay relaxed during critical incidents and for the amazing service she provides to the residents of Ventura County. And again, I thank you, board, for this recognition for this week. It's very well deserved, and I wish Amber was here today, but my assistant manager, Erin Brockus, and I are here on her behalf, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. And, you know, just so you know, statistics, because we're always checking it out, three hundred and thirteen thousand telephone calls come into the communication center, and over a hundred thousand are nine-one-one calls. So it just, it shows you that our community knows where to reach out and knows where to get the help they need, and our public safety is so crucial for our community, and what you do is just phenomenal. So Amber Anderson, I know she's not here today, but in case she even watched or one of her colleagues watched, we really do appreciate her as well, and really appreciate both of our departments recognizing our employees, our staff, for doing a job well done. I know there are many others in your departments as well, and just appreciate all of them. Just thank you. Do we have any comments or from our board? If not, I'd like to have, bring both of the resolutions, the certificates for Chris and Amber down, and we can take a photo, and I see some team that can come down as well. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have fifty-one, presentation proclaiming the month of April, two thousand twenty-four, is Sexual Assault Awareness Month in Ventura County. And today, we have Dr. Caroline Paj, oh, shoot, Pajatella Sutton. I think I know, I screwed that one up because I'm thinking in my head I did. Executive Director of Coalition for Family Harmony, and Jennifer Duarte, our Sexual Assault Response Team Coordinator for Coalition of Family Harmony. Please come on down.
Thank you so much for being here this morning.
Thank you so much to Board of Supervisors, Chair Long, and Dr. Johnson for having us this morning. I'm Dr. Caroline Pajatella Sutton, Executive Director of Coalition for Family Harmony, and we're happy to be here today to tell you a little bit about our Rape Crisis Program and also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Being the only rape crisis center in Ventura County is a great responsibility, one that we take seriously and have for over forty-two years. With twenty-four-seven advocate response, counseling, support groups, and education, we are committed to serving every victim of sexual assault and rape in our county. This would not be possible without an amazing team of advocates and therapists. Some are here today that I'd like to give a shout out to because they do amazing work. And they're there to ensure victims that they're heard, that they're believed, and that they know their rights. As we look towards a year looming with funding cuts, we continue to find ways to support victims in their darkest hours. We are wearing teal all month and denim tomorrow, as tomorrow is Denim Day. And a little shameless plug, we do have tickets left at our event tomorrow if you're interested. And this is all to show support for victims and raise awareness. Thank you for your support. I'm going to hand it over to the amazing Jennifer Duarte, our Sexual Assault Response Team Coordinator.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Caroline. I want to start off by saying thank you to Chair Long, CEO, Dr. Johnson, and all of the board supervisors for the opportunity to proclaim April, two thousand twenty-four, Sexual Assault Awareness Month. My name is Jennifer Duarte, pronoun she/her in AI, and I am the Sexual Assault Response Team Coordinator at Coalition for Family Harmony. April marks Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time when we come together a time when we come together to shed light on sexual violence and reaffirm our commitment to creating a world free from violence. Sexual assault does not discriminate. It transcends age, gender, race, and socioeconomic status, which, as a rape crisis advocate, is unfortunately something that I see day to day on, as my role as an advocate. It has no boundaries, and it shatters lives, undermines trust, and robs individuals of dignity and their autonomy. As advocates, we remind survivors that it is not their fault. They are brave and we, and they will prevail. Coalition for Family Harmony, as Caroline mentioned, is the only rape crisis center in Ventura County. And in 2023, we've provided over one thousand therapy sessions for survivors of sexual violence. And our advocates are available twenty-four-seven. They provide emotional support during long invasive medical forensic exams and remind survivors that they are not alone throughout this process. We listen to the survivors' needs, including being open to reporting at locations other than police stations. In the last few months, we've had an increase in patrol officers and survivors using our Coalition for Family Harmony office as a safe location to make these reports of sexual assault. This allows for a more trauma-informed care for our community members and a warm handoff to mental health support, free counseling, legal aid, housing, and medical assistance. Coalition for Family Harmony is not a standalone agency. We have strong partnerships with victim service providers such as the Safe Harbors and Family Justice Center to support survivors in navigating the criminal justice system and connecting them to community resources. And we work with our local schools to provide education that challenge harmful attitudes and stereotypes that perpetuates rape culture. We also recognize the dedicated efforts of law enforcement, particularly the detectives who work tirelessly to pursue justice for survivors daily. Sexual violence has a wide-reaching impact. In the United States, a sexual assault occurs every sixty-eight seconds, with child victimization every nine minutes. Shockingly, only twenty-five out of one thousand perpetrators get prosecuted, are incarcerated. We must hold these perpetrators accountable for their actions. As advocates and community members, we can support survivors in several ways, such as first, investing in comprehensive prevention strategies and survivor-centered, uh, support services that prioritize the needs and voices of those impacted by sexual violence. Second, teach our children about consent. Let them know that no one is entitled to touch their bodies or make them feel uncomfortable. And finally, if someone tells you that they were sexually assaulted, refrain from asking them where they were, what they were wearing, or what they were doing, but instead believe them, offer support, assist them in connecting services, and thank them for trusting you with their story. Let us remember that change begins with every one of us. It begins with the courage to speak out against injustice, the compassion to support survivors, and the commitment to educate ourselves. We stand united, determined to break the silence, and refuse to accept a culture that normalizes and trivializes the violation of another person's body and spirit. Instead, we pledge to cultivate a culture where, a culture of consent, respect, and empathy. A culture where survivors are believed, supported, and empowered to reclaim themselves and to process their, and to go through their healing process. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Well said. We do this in April to shed light on this subject. And we cannot state that it doesn't happen in our community. It just, it does. And data shows that approximately one out of three women and one out of every four men will encounter sexual violence at some point in their lives. But what was really, it's, it's that shocking to me. But even more so is the, that research shows that one out of four girls and one out of six boys have experienced sexual abuse before they reached eighteen. So that statistic didn't go much higher after. And I only say that because we really do have to have the community engaged, and our schools engaged, and that conversation with our families to make sure that we speak out against sexual violence and embrace survivors. Really well said on that, because it's not, well, you know, the twenty questions. It's more, how do we support? How do we give you the services and support that you need to, to be successful in whatever the success for you means? Um, and so I just really wanted to say thank you for sharing this today. We do take this very seriously in our communities. And wanted to open it up for anyone to say anything from our Board of Supervisors, and then we'll go down for a presentation or proclamation. There's anything? All right, well, come on down. All right, now, the next one, my pleasure is to pass this over to Supervisor Parvin for fifty-two.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to be proclaiming April, 2024, as Autism Acceptance Month. The diagnosis of autism is a life-changing event for all families. And autism now affects one in thirty-six children, which is really kind of a surprising number when you think about it, and occurs in all racial, ethnic, socioeconomic groups, according to the Center of Disease Control and Prevention. The ARC of Ventura County is a nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality of life for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families, so that they can support, they have the support and services they need to be fully engaged in their communities. Established in nineteen fifty-four, the ARC serves nearly seven hundred individuals in a variety of programs throughout Ventura County and are all person-centered, community-based, and fully inclusive. The ARC is committed to empowering the individuals they support by offering opportunities that lead to greater independence and self-determined lives in regular, everyday settings. The ARC of Ventura County is one of seven hundred chapters nationwide that is helping to promote and protect human rights of people with ADD and actively supports their full participation and inclusion in the community throughout their lifetimes. So on behalf of the County Board of Supervisor, we, we give great pleasure in proclaiming April, 2024, as National Autism Awareness Month and recognize the seventy years of service by the ARC of Ventura County to fulfill its mission, its mission to help and improve the lives of people affected by autism. This one really touches me very closely, because I have a very close family member who has autism. And she's beautifully unique. I just wanted to share how much I love her. And I'm just so grateful to have her in my life. And I think anyone that lives with someone with autism feels exactly the same way that I do. And that, I'd now like to present this certificate. And if, if there's any other comments from the Board of Supervisors, I would call Esther Anaya forward.
Hello, I'm Esther Anaya, the Executive Director of the ARC of Ventura County. On behalf of the ARC of Ventura County, I want to thank Supervisor Parvin, the Board of Supervisors, and Dr. Johnson for this proclamation of Autism Awareness Month and for recognizing the ARC's seventy years of dedicated service to improving the quality of life for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, referred to as ADD. We at the ARC of Ventura County believe that all people have the ability to be contributing members of their communities. Currently, we support close to seven hundred individuals throughout the county of Ventura. The ARC offers various services and supports to help individuals connect to their communities. We provide employment services, residential supports for independent living, digital literacy through the use of assistive technology. And for individuals who use a wheelchair, we offer the MOVE program, which uses specialized equipment to assist individuals to transition from sitting to standing to walking. And the ARC offers advocacy. Just two weeks ago, the ARC, along with peer advocates, lobbied at the state Capitol so that people with ADD will continue to have a voice for the necessary funding of these services. In August, the ARC will celebrate its seventy-year anniversary. What began as a small group of parents desiring integration for their children now exists as a reality through the ARC. Please look to our social media for information of our seventieth anniversary event scheduled in August. All of you are welcome to attend and achieve with us. Lastly, I'd like to speak to our Latino population. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll come down. Yeah.
Okay, next up will be item fifty-two. And we're going to pass that on to, or sorry, fifty-three. And we're going to pass that on to Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you, Chair. This morning, I would like to welcome a presentation as we proclaim the month of April, 2024, as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month in Ventura County. And we do have some very special guests, including David Yoshitomi, the Arts and Culture Manager here for Ventura County, who will share a few words, followed by Carolyn Mullen, who is the Executive Director of the Oxnard Performing Arts Center Corporation. And I know she will be introducing an additional special guest, our Ambassador Consul Ricardo Santana, who is also joining us this morning with Consul Juan Antonio Sid Davila. So, Mr. Yoshitomi, I'll pass it on to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Supervisor Lopez, and good morning, Chair Long, Supervisors, Dr. Johnson. I'm grateful to be here today to introduce members of the local arts community who are here to receive this proclamation. First, I would like to thank your board for recognizing April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month here in Ventura County. This month was first recognized by the State of California in 2019, following an initiative by Californians for the Arts aimed at enhancing visibility and awareness of the creative sectors, empowering its community, and spurring greater investments in the creative industry and its workforce. This is a recognition of not only the economic importance of the creative industries, but also their cross-sector contributions in areas like healthcare, education, housing, youth development, and the environment. It is truly an exciting time for arts and culture here in Ventura County. We have launched the Arts and Culture Investment Fund, which represents the first dedicated arts and culture funding program in the county and the largest one-time distribution of funding to not both nonprofit arts and culture organizations and individual artists by local government in our area. And recent figures indicate that employment in the creative economy is likely growing in our county, with jobs surpassing pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic numbers in a variety of sectors. I'd be remiss not to mention that this month, we are also showcasing the artistic and creative ability of the county's own workforce in our Twenty-First Annual Employee, Retiree, and Family Arts Show, now on display through May ninth, right here in the Hall of Administration on the main plaza and fourth floors. This year, we had over sixty, or sixty-seven entries from artists connected to our county organization, ranging from youth to professional. But most exciting is the work being done by the artists, culture bearers, and arts and culture organizations out in the field. It is now my pleasure to introduce Carolyn Mullen, the Executive Director of the Oxnard Performing Arts Center nonprofit, and a group of local Ventura County artists she has assembled to discuss more about, to receive this, this proclamation and to talk about their work. Thank you.
Good morning. We extend our deepest gratitude to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors for their, your pivotal acknowledgement of April as Arts, Culture, and Creativity Month. This proclamation underscores the profound significance of the arts in fostering community connection, expression, and understanding. We at OPAC are honored to accept this proclamation, further affirming our commitment to cultivating artistic spaces that uplift and empower individuals from all walks of life. At OPAC, we recognize that true cultural enrichment transcends traditional boundaries, which is why we are passionately involved in initiatives like developing and supporting a cultural space at the Mexican consulate in Oxnard, which welcomes ninety-six thousand visitors annually. And you'll get a catalog at some point of, of our last show. This endeavor serves as a beacon of accessibility, ensuring that the transformative power of the arts reaches even the most marginalized and underserved individuals in our community. Amidst the challenges of limited funding for the arts, yes, I know you've heard that a lot, thank you, for the money, and venue scarcity, our dedication to fostering creativity remains unwavering. We firmly believe that the arts must adapt and innovate under pressure, emerging even more resilient and impactful. With the support of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and our community, we are confident in our ability to overcome these obstacles and continue nurturing a vibrant cultural landscape for generations to come. Today, I'm honored to stand here with a few- Today, I'm honored to stand here with a few of the artists we have featured at the Mexican Consulate Gallery, as well as leadership from the consulate Ambassador Santana and Consul for Community Outreach Juan Antonio Sidavila. I'd like for everyone to come up and introduce themselves and say a few words.
Dear friends, Kelly Long, Jane Lopez, and friends of the board and the staff, and difference of the Oxnard Performing Arts of Center OPAC. On behalf of the Mexican consulate in Oxnard, we want to say a big congratulations on the proclamation you received during the month of art, culture, and creativity. This recognition shows how much of a positive impact OPAC has had on the community, promoting appreciation and enjoyment of the arts in all of its forms. We're very happy to have worked together with you on cultural activities that benefit our community. Your dedication and commitment have really helped to strengthen the cultural ties between Mexico and the United States, making our social fabric richer and promoting diversity and understanding. It's an honor for us to have such valuable allies like you in promoting cultural and the arts. We look forward to continuing the work together on future projects that benefit our community and strengthen our cultural bonds even more. Congratulations again on this well-deserved recognition.
Good morning. As artists, I don't have a polished speech. I just want to thank you guys for what you do and supporting the arts and creating a place for artists to be artists, which is really important. And let us not forget that a place with no art has no culture. Thank you, guys.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. It feels great to be here and to speak about the April becoming the Arts and Culture Month. My name's Elisa Torres, and I'm a local muralist and artist. And I'm just super grateful that I'm finally achieving my dream of becoming a true artist and having that as a career. That would not be possible without the different budgets from our city and the county. And I look forward to the next generations of artists that will be up here talking and thanking you guys. So, thank you.
Hola, buenos dias a todos. Mi nombre es Benita Martinez. Yo soy zapoteca. Y yo soy artesana en el tejido, en el arte textil como este tipo de sarapes, hechos en telar de pedal en técnica ancestral. Y lo traigo aquí para compartir con todos los que quieran aprender. Estoy muy agradecida con todos ustedes por el gran apoyo al Condado de Ventura, al consulado, a OPAC. Muchas gracias por invitarme y estar aquí. Gracias.
Yes, I can translate that. Thank you. So, Benita Martínez Sosa is Zapotec. She is an artisan and has brought a gift to share with the rest of the board, the textiles that she works on. And we hope to highlight a little bit more of her work later on, but gracias. See, so she brings a miniature version of the artwork that she does to share with us. So, muchas gracias, Benita.
And then we have one shy artist who's not going to come up, and that's Odasio Martinez, but he's amazing. He has a downtown tattoo studio in Oxnard. We love him, but he's also a really incredible fine artist. And Christian Ramirez was our first speaker. So, that's it for our presentation. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Great. Thank you all so much for coming here. Muchas gracias por estar presentes en esta presentación que estamos reconociendo el arte y la cultura, la creatividad aquí en el Condado de Ventura. It is quite an honor to be a part of this community and to share in the work that local artists are contributing to our community here in Ventura County and demonstrating the value of arts, culture, and creativity being essential to our thriving community. So, with that, I do want to thank Ambassador Santana for his partnership with local artists, really highlighting the connection between art, our immigrant community, and how we're all here as one. So, this is a really great partnership that I think will further demonstrate how we value our culture and art in Ventura County. So, with that, we do have the proclamation and certificates to recognize the artists who have been part of the two latest exhibits at the consulate office, which was the Eight at Fifth, which is the handbook that I think everyone, the catalog that everyone received. I mean photographs, artwork that really depict the community in Ventura County, and the current exhibit, Arbol de la Vida, which is all women artists. And really encourage everyone, if you have the opportunity to visit the consulate office, the moment you step in, you will see the artwork there, and it is just fantastic. So, thank you so much. And any closing comments? All right, perfect. Without pictures.
So pretty. All right, so now we're going to start on our 11 o'clock time certance. The art was beautiful. Thank you again for sharing all of that. Please stop by our very talented community. Just so much art everywhere. It's beautiful. The next item we have is a public hearing regarding the qualifications of David Fleisch to the position of interim road commissioner, from commissioner to interim, yeah, I think I said it right. Mike Pettit, lead us on this mission we have here today. And it is a public hearing, so I might as well just open it now, and then we can go on from there.
Thank you, Chair Long, members of the board, CEO, Dr. Johnson. The item before your board this morning is to consider appointing David Fleisch to the position of interim road commissioner. This action takes place as a result of the retirement of Public Works Agency Director Jeff Pratt at the end of March. It's our responsibility as a county to have roads commissioner appointed. The requirements of the position do put forth that the road commissioner must be a registered engineer. And so, we are recommending to your board that David Fleisch be appointed as that interim road commissioner until a new Public Works Agency Director is appointed. And at that time, we would bring a further consideration forward to your board. David Fleisch is a registered engineer and has served as the Director of Transportation for the county for quite some time through his experience. So, we believe he's fully qualified to perform this function.
Okay, and I see him in the audience today. I'm like, is there any comments you would like to make?
He did say he would like to come up and present some engineering calcs to you if you would like your board's consideration.
I joke about this only because we've had many wonderful presentations from Mr. Fleisch. And I'd like to see if we have any public comments on this item.
Chair Long, there are no requests to speak for this item. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from our board on this before I close public hearing? Go right ahead. Are you sure he wants to take on this job?
Thank you Supervisor Parvin. Yes, I accept the responsibility.
That was my only question. Well, and it's a good question, because we have so many of our staff that step up when we are needed, even though we might not have all the time to do the job. So, I appreciate that. I'm going to close this public hearing. And now for any deliberation or motion.
This item was moved by Supervisor Parvin and seconded by Supervisor Lavier. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And so, it is a unanimous decision that Mr. David Fleisch is now our road commissioner, interim road commissioner. And congratulations. Thank you very much. I know you will put us on the right path. Okay, next up we have is 55. It's a receive and file of our COVID-19 after-action report implementation plan. It's a receive and file of a summary presentation by our Constant Association on the COVID-19 after-action report and implementation plan, and to provide any further directions. And I just wanted to really briefly make a statement for our community. As I've been here since 2016, this is something I think our county does well, is after any disaster, that we actually do work with our cities and our counties and nonprofits, businesses, and so forth, to get an after-action report to see what things we can do better, what things worked, and what things we need to keep working on. And so, I wanted to make sure people knew that this is not our first after-action report on any disaster. I do believe COVID personally was a disaster from a standpoint that our community had to deal with it and go through such a pandemic that most people have never been through. And so, like the Thomas Fire, I feel the Thomas Fire was something our county had not been through, the biggest fire for the state that lasted, you know, biggest fire for six months until another one came. But just in stating that, I really do appreciate our staff, our leadership at our executive level, and department heads to ensure that we do this and make sure that we have transparency for our community. So, with that, Mr. Pettit, I'd like you to lead us on with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Long, members of the board, CEO, Dr. Johnson. For the record, my name is Mike Pettit, Assistant County Executive Officer. As you indicated, Chair Long, your board approved a contract with Constant and Associates on September 12th to conduct an after-action review and develop an implementation plan. And as you indicated, Chair Long, that is in practice, in keeping with practices at our county. After a major disaster, we conduct an after-action review to find out how we can do things better moving forward into the future, to amplify those things that went well, and to improve upon those things where there is opportunity for improvement, especially in response to the strategic priorities set by your board of service excellence and continuous process improvement. So, that is the purpose of this after-action report today, to identify those lessons learned so that we can be better prepared. We all hope and pray that a disaster of this proportion, a worldwide pandemic, never occurs again. But we do want to take actions to ensure that we're increasingly prepared moving forward in the future. During the development of this after-action report and implementation plan, the Constant project team conducted a comprehensive data collection process, which included extensive interviews and reviews of documentation associated with the plan at the state, local, and local levels, interviewed our local community groups and community-based organizations. And we also issued a survey, a public survey. We sent out communication of over 360,000 emails and newsletter invitations, 33,200 social media impressions, and multiple advertisements in both English and Spanish in our print media and publications throughout the county. And that resulted in survey responses of over 8,500 responses from our community. So, Constant and Associates took all of this information and analyzed it, and that has resulted in the after-action report that's before your board today. And now, to summarize the findings from that report, I want to invite Jessica Driscoll. She's a Senior Associate with Constant and Associates, who will share their findings based upon the information that they gathered. So, Jessica.
Good morning, everyone. First, I want to say a heartfelt thank you for the County of Ventura for entrusting Constant and Associates with this crucial project. I want to give a little bit about my background. I'm a Senior Associate at Constant and Associates. I also have a background with the COVID-19 response, where I worked up in Butte County up until April of 2021, responding to COVID-19 in a public health department as their public health emergency manager. Also responded to 23 other major emergencies up in Butte County, because something was always going on, or something was always on fire up there. I've also written 15 COVID after-action reports or participated in the development of those 15 COVID after-action reports. So, that shows a little bit about what we do at Constant, what I have done throughout this project. Today, my discussion is centering on the report's findings, where we delve into the various aspects of the county's response to the COVID-19 response, from strategic operations to community resilience. We'll explore the successes and areas for improvement as documented in the report. Let's get started on the journey of reflection and forward-thinking. Let's define the scope and the essence of the county's after-action report, or you'll hear me say AAR. Spanning March 2020, yes, all the way four-plus years ago, to February of 2023. This AAR is not just a document, it's a blueprint for growth. It captures the County of Ventura's response to the pandemic, detailing strengths and pinpointing areas for improvement. Remember, improvement here is not synonymous with weakness. Instead, it is an acknowledgement that even within our strengths, there's room to evolve. Perhaps that's 20% where we need to enhance capabilities further. 80% of that went well, but there's still 20% room for improvement. For instance, a robust response mechanism might have been a strength, but we're aiming for that extra mile. The purpose of this report is to build upon the county's robust foundation to address the barriers encountered and to reinforce the community's resilience. While we can't change the past, we're moving While we can't change the past, we're moving forward with actionable solution, preparing Ventura County for all hazard responses in the future. As we progress through this presentation, keep in mind our focus is to be constructive and to bolster what worked well and to forge paths through obstacles with clear and strategic recommendations. All right, this slide highlights the county's response and adaptability during the COVID-19 crisis as detailed in the AAR. The county's strategic actions were in alignment with the board's directives, mindful of maintaining a balance between those state and federal mandates as well and the community's social economic well-being. Faced with a virus not seen since the 1918 flu, the county navigated through unknown territories marked by ever-changing science and the different variants. These challenges tested the county's ability to adapt and uphold the public trust amidst a rapidly evolving crisis. Between March 2020 and February 2023, the county recorded 240,803 COVID-19 cases, resulting in 1,676 deaths. Beyond numbers, these statistics reflect the heavy impact on the community, highlighting the significant response the situation demanded. Strategically, the county prioritized flexibility, supporting social economic stability by initiating the reopening of businesses and schools. The county took mental health seriously and adopted innovative approaches in healthcare services, ensuring a robust response that went beyond just the health implications. In response to emerging challenges, the county acted swiftly, a testament to its commitment to health and safety. As we proceed, let's remember that these efforts reflect that the County of Ventura's dedication to serving its community during an unprecedented global emergency. Let's take a moment to appreciate the efforts of the county in safeguarding its community during a time of great uncertainty. The county's commitment to public safety was evident by careful consideration in implementation and adherence to federal and state orders and guidance, ensuring a harmonized response to the health crisis. The county's strategic approach was twofold. Prioritizing the health of its citizens while supporting the heartbeat of its community, including residents and businesses. Including, by implementing health mandates and safety protocols, the county managed to maintain lower COVID-19 mortality rates as displayed on the chart that you see here compared to the US, California, and the neighboring county of LA. This is a testament to the effectiveness of the county's collective efforts and responsive measures that were put in place. The county acted as a steward of economic stability, offering guidance and assistance to businesses navigating unprecedented challenges. This support helped cushion the economic shock and served as crucial lifeline for many, allowing for a gradual and safer return to those day-to-day operations. In balancing these priorities, the county not only protected the health of its residents, but also laid the framework for economic rebound. As we reflect on these efforts throughout the report, it's clear that the county's response was not merely actions, was a series of actions, but a comprehensive commitment to the well-being of every individual enterprise within its community. As we see on the slide, we need to learn from data and science, which was very important to the response. And we also use this to inform the after-action report. The County of Ventura contracted with us, Constant, to support the data collection and development of the report. Our methodology was thorough and collaborative, working with a wide range of stakeholders. What did we do? How did that look? First, a documentation review was undertaken. We gathered a substantial set of documents from various county departments, which were analyzed using a documentation review matrix. This process was crucial to organizing and interpreting the wealth of information that was available to us to start seeing trends within the data being collected. Surveys, as Mike also spoke about. We had a plethora of survey responses, the largest I have ever seen in this effort. Implemented across the county in both English and Spanish. We captured feedback from county staff, response staff, and the wider community. A strategic outreach campaign was employed for high engagement with impressive open and click rates with email campaigns and significant reach through social media and news outlets. Interviews with 31 participants enriched our data with nuanced firsthand experiences. These were complemented by focus area discussions with county staff and response partners to drill down into the very specific areas of response. This multi-pronged approach, document review, survey, interviews, and focus area discussions provided a well-rounded perspective, informing the development of the AAR and ensuring that the participating voices were heard. For detailed survey data and insights, please refer to the after-action report. Let's go into the findings of the data collection process. We did take a chapter-by-chapter approach. We have five chapters. So I will go ahead and get started on Chapter One, the County Operations and Coordination. Chapter one of the report examines the pivotal strategies and actions Ventura employed in its emergency management during the pandemic. In terms of strengths, the county executive office was set up for a COVID task force demonstrating foresight and coordination essential for an effective response. Impressively, the county mobilized 800 disaster service workers to over 1,038 critical assignments, something I have not seen in those numbers before, reflecting a high degree of operational preparedness. However, the unprecedented nature of the pandemic also brought to light needing refinement, particularly within the continuity of operations planning, where enhancements could further solidify long-term responsiveness. The report acknowledges the organizational fortitude and adaptability of the county's staff. Their dedication was supported through policies like the COVID-19 paid sick leave, ensuring staff welfare aligned with public health guidelines. Internal communication was another area where the county excelled. Consistent and transparent dialogue across departments facilitated and coordinated an effective response, although some stakeholders still reported a need for better communication, especially to those deployed in the field who may have had a little access to emails in some of those communication channels that were going out. Financially, the county showed strong financial management, which was key to the rapid procurement of necessary supplies. The early engagement of a COVID-19 consultant helped optimize disaster funding management, mitigating potential financial and audit risks we've seen in other counties throughout the state. One procedural gap identified was a lack of understanding as it relates to a specialized county-wide procurement policy designed with a little lack of clarity for emergency situations. These insights formed the basis for recommendations to enhance the county's further emergency management and operational capabilities. Chapter two, Public Communication and External Coordination. Chapter two of this report brings into focus the county's response during the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly highlighting its success in community engagement and communication strategies. The county established a community-centric approach to public health messaging, ensuring a broad reach across diverse audiences through multiple channels and platforms. Strengths that were identified include the county's collaborative with respected community leaders, which bolstered the impact of communication strategies that allowed for culturally sensitive and need-specific messaging. In noteworthy move, the county launched a comprehensive public awareness campaign to support community mental health, advocating for healthy habits and mindfulness. Again, something that you don't see throughout a lot of counties. However, areas for improvement were also recognized. The communications team encountered significant challenges, particularly with the management of multiple social media pages and a substantial volume of public inquiries. In terms of intergovernment coordination, the county was effective in facilitating open dialogue with state, local, city, and special districts, which was vital for a unified response. However, the fluid nature of pandemic guidance sometimes led to uncertainties and communication timelines between local jurisdictions and organizations. Education was another key area where the county demonstrated prompt action, partnering with educational districts to safeguard the health of school staff and students while minimizing educational disruptions. The Ventura County Behavior Health Department's support in establishing wellness centers and public schools was a strategic innovation to address students' social and emotional needs. Yet, the early stages of the pandemic highlighted a lack of supplemental staff and mental health support resources indicating a need for more robust preparation to support educational institutions in crisis response. This chapter emphasizes the county's commitment to inclusivity and continuous improvement in its pandemic response efforts, ensuring that critical services and information were effectively delivered to the community. Social Services and Community Resources. Chapter three of the after-action report sheds light on the comprehensive response to the pandemic's social economic impacts through social services and community resources. Initiatives like Project Room Key and Rental Assistance Programs were crucial in supporting these most affected by COVID-19. The county's response was characterized by the effective leveraging of federal funds, delivering vital rental assistance, and connecting residents with support services. The Farm Worker Household Assistance Program backed by federal CARES funding addressed the need of one of the most vulnerable worker groups. Food security was enhanced through the expansion of meal services for older adults and individuals with disabilities. The Great Plates Delivered Program and the Adaptation of the Food Pantry Program exemplified the county's resolve to meet the increased nutritional needs of older seniors and disabled residents. Project Room Key demonstrated the county's commitment to temporary housing solutions, providing motel vouchers to 850 individuals despite some reluctance from property owners. The property owners paved the way for the creation of new permanent supportive housing units. I'm sorry, the project paved, not the property owners. Business recovery efforts include the launch of the Business Assistance Grant program, which distributed grants to small businesses and nonprofits. The county also employed a business ambassador program to guide local businesses through that complicated reopening process and the state guidance. However, the report recognizes the needs for improvement, particularly in ensuring linguistics, inclusivity, and grant materials and in navigating the challenges posed by state-mandated business closures. This chapter showcases the county's dedicated approach to sustaining community welfare through strategic social initiatives and business support programs during a time of crisis. Medical and Health Protective Measures. Chapter four of the report chronicles the county's health response amid the pandemic, emphasizing a strategic, science-based approach. The county's leadership, including the Board of Supervisors, the COVID-19 Task Force effectively marshaled resources to protect its citizens, particularly the most vulnerable, through comprehensive public health directives and widespread communication efforts. The county's strengths were evident in the rapid establishment of 13 high-volume testing sites and the inclusion of such services in the county-operated healthcare centers and correctional facilities. Notably, the county's public health laboratory was one of California's first to test for COVID-19, a testament to its proactive stance. Additionally, the deployment of mobile testing units by the county and state-run Opt-in Serve exemplified flexibility in meeting community testing needs. Vaccination efforts saw the formation of a robust site management system, underpinned by the dedication of vaccine site management, including site leads. An equitable approach to site expansion ensured all community segments had access to vaccination services. Despite these services, the county encountered hurdles in managing public trust while enforcing health orders. Operational challenges were also faced in aligning the testing hours, and certain residents felt the vaccine efforts did not fully reach the most vulnerable groups. This chapter underscores the residents' resolute commitment to health and safety, navigating through the pandemic's complexities with agility and a comprehensive plan of action. We'll go ahead and move to Chapter Five, Healthcare Operations and Coordination. Chapter five reveals the county's supported EMS and healthcare resources to manage surge capacity effectively. The county demonstrated exceptional agility, establishing mobile health units, and leveraging telehealth to alleviate hospital burdens and bolster patient care. The county's partnership-based response coordination led to seamless information flow among hospitals, ensuring swift action on emerging healthcare needs. The utilization of ambulance services for patient transport and staff augmentation played a pivotal role in addressing EMS demands. The strategic establishment of transportation tents for isolation and integration of telehealth services exemplified the county's responsive adaptation to the pandemic's challenges. At the Ventura County Medical Center, initiatives such as employing personal protective equipment, or PPE, hygienists, initiating COVID rounds significantly enhance safety and then morale for staff. The proactive staffing measure at healthcare facilities ensured uninterrupted service during peak surge times. Despite these strengths, there is room for improvement. Enhancing visibility and accessibility of mental health resources for staff and resolving the complexity and transferring patients to skilled nursing facilities require attention to improve overall healthcare delivery to support healthcare workers. In essence, Chapter Five portrays a county that is not only responsive but also resilient, swiftly adapting operations to maintain a high standard of care during the healthcare crisis. I must say, I did want to make sure we had an extra slide in here about the amazing public communication and outreach you had. We talked about this a little bit in Chapter Two. But let's really turn our attention to how the county pursued equity and accessibility and public communication and outreach efforts during the COVID-19 pandemic. Central to the county's strategy was the whole-community approach, which ensured that all residents, regardless of background or ability, received critical health information. Key to this success were the Complete Reach Committee and the Promontories, who alongside other trusted, community-based organizations and partners, formed an intricate network amplifying the reach of health messaging. The county leveraged a variety of communication channels to maintain an open dialogue with its citizens. Diverse messaging, the use of television, radio, social media platforms, augmented with press conferences, town halls, email campaigns, ensured widespread information distribution. Innovative updates, utilizing things such as WhatsApp, which helped keep the county's farmworker community informed with regular updates. Accessible material, printed health messages were strategically placed in high-traffic public spaces like supermarkets, bus shelters, schools, ensuring visibility and reach. Inclusive practices, recognizing the diverse linguistic needs. The county translated essential health messaging into Spanish and provided instructional videos in American Sign Language for the hearing impaired and utilized indigenous-speaking trusted messengers to engage indigenous-speaking members of the community. These strategies really reflect the dedication to a comprehensive communication strategy, one that respects and responds to the needs of the whole community. Now, as I said before, Constant goes out. We've done so many of these after-action reports throughout the country, throughout the state. We thought it was important to highlight a few things that really stuck out to us. What made you guys unique? What were some innovative strategies that we saw that just really distinguished you apart from some of our other clients that we've seen or other partners that we've worked with? And so although we've talked about some of these, I really wanted to set out and look at some of these different items. Ventura having a benchmark for an emergency response for deploying 800 disaster service workers for over 1,000 different assignments is exceptional. I tried deploying disaster service workers on a regular basis when I was up in Butte County. It's not an easy task, so I really commend that. The approach to public health messaging, I know I just talked about it on the previous slide, but I cannot say enough, all the work- slide, but I cannot say enough, all the work you guys did to really make sure it was a multifaceted and community-oriented approach. In supporting businesses, the county facilitated compliance and the attestation process for reopening, aiding local enterprises, in navigating the complex landscape of the public health regulations. This support was crucial in achieving things such as a remarkable 89% business compliance rate with health guidelines, astronomical compared to other counties that we see. Among the first in the state was the Ventura County Public Health Lab. As a public health nerd, I definitely feel that is very important. I know you guys probably took some things away from the state lab that we needed at the state lab, so I very much appreciate that. And that really sets you guys apart, as being one of the first labs in the state for COVID-19 testing. It really shows your proactive nature. The leadership in managing vaccination sites was notable, with site leads ensuring efficient operations and collaborative efforts, and really the overall process and the way your sites were set up in those vaccination sites. Adapting to new challenges, the county was quick and strategic in establishing things such as the transportation tents. I loved seeing pictures of those. Definitely look at those in the report. Integrating the telehealth services throughout collaboration with the Office of Emergency Services and enhancing that patient access to care during surge times. Having your own medical center, that puts you above the rest as well. Within that, the introduction to those PPE hygienists, the COVID-19 rounds, and then the Care B&amp;B, setting that up for your healthcare workers. That housing initiative really boosted your staff morale from our data collection and patient safety, directly impacting the community's health outcomes. Finally, the foresight of the county's executive office in engaging a COVID-19 consultant early on in the pandemic, maximize funding opportunities and reduce financial risk, showcasing financial prudence and strategic planning. Throughout this project, the kindness, the engagement from stakeholders in Ventura was something that I found incredible. There was a collective willingness to support this report, reflecting this also in the community. When we were going out in public, going out to dinner, just out and about, really seeing that throughout your community, really just that overall gratitude, the collaborative spirit within your community. Okay, we have all these findings. Uh-oh, let's see. There we go. Oh, it went back. All right, what do we do now? That's the big question. We have a report, we have all these findings. Now we need actionable solutions. We need to take action on the what's next. This report includes an appendix, which is called an implementation plan, which is developed to support the county's ongoing efforts post-COVID-19 After Action Report. The recommendations are designed to be responsive to the lessons learned and are adaptable to the county's resource availability and evolving needs. First, we recommend a comprehensive update to the emergency operations plans. Incorporating pandemic response learnings, this ensures that the best practices for infectious disease crises are integrated, enhancing preparedness for similar future events. We also emphasize the need for a robust internal emergency communication plan. By improving IT infrastructure and reviewing continuity of operations plans, you can also bolster the capacity for crisis communication internally and with the public. Strengthening the Disaster Service Worker Program is crucial. Establishing clear roles, investing in ongoing training, will weave the significance of these roles into the organizational fabric to enhance that readiness. During emergencies, we know the importance of communication. That's always something you're going to find in an after-action report. We must be prepared to scale up teams to match the complexity of any given situation and ensuring effective public outreach. Digital inclusivity is not an option. It's essential. Therefore, increasing digital accessibility is a key step towards equitable dissemination of emergency information and services. We also propose establishing comprehensive plans for community testing and vaccination that are scalable and consider community needs, such as mobile testing sites, equitable access, and simplified registration processes, especially for those with limited technology I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to each and every person who played a role in this project's success. That goes for the Project Steering Committee, the smaller planning team, the county of Ventura as a whole, all those that you see listed on this slide, and the Ventura County community. We appreciate each and every one of you for everything you've done to help inform this report and to make your community a safer place. We really appreciate at Constant the ability to work on this report and to give you a fully comprehensive COVID-19 After Action Report. Thank you.
Wow. You just summed up a couple years pretty quickly there. I don't know about you, but it's like that post-trauma syndrome here. I'm like, ah, I remember that, I remember that. Oh, how many press releases do we have? And test sites? And, yeah. Such hardship that everyone went through, whether you were working to support the community or you were working in the community, the businesses, education, nonprofits. It's very impressive, the feedback you've gotten. I'm actually very positive in the results. I'm really happy to hear what community members and all said. I'd like to open it up first to our board to see if there was any specific questions you had before we went to public comment. Yes?
Thank you. This is a great body of work, and I like how you wove the recommendations in to each one of the chapters instead of putting them at the end. It's just very well done, so thank you very much. My question is on the surveys. Some of the feedback I got with, once this was published, was from some businesses, business owners, who said that they never received a survey or had an opportunity to participate in a survey. I'm looking at the data, shows that there was a fairly low percentage rate of participation in the survey by people who identified as a business owner or entrepreneur. Can you share the methodology for getting the survey out to the community and how we went about doing that? Just to better understand that, please.
I'll pass that to Mike.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor. So, we engaged in a massive campaign to get that information out to the businesses. During the pandemic, we had businesses register with us to test and reopen. So, one of the avenues that we used is we sent out the survey to that list of over 3,000 businesses for them to respond to the survey. We also did a social media campaign to over 360,000 individuals in the county through Nextdoor on our social media presences, on Instagram, Facebook, X, et cetera. We published ads in the newspaper, in multiple newspapers throughout the county, both in English and Spanish. So, we did a quite extensive campaign to solicit survey response, and the vast majority of our responses were from the community in the survey. About of the 8,500 responses, about only 1,000 of them were internal to the county. So, all the rest were the community, a number of them from our business community. So, we definitely are open to future efforts to try and reach that incentive more. We also communicated the survey out to our partners, the Chambers, the EDC, and our local business partners as well.
You mentioned perhaps reaching out, excuse me, perhaps reaching out and soliciting additional feedback. Is there a mechanism for that? Are we beyond that with this particular contract and opportunity?
I think right now, we're beyond that with this particular contract, but we're always open to further feedback. If there's further feedback from our business community, we want to hear that.
Okay, that's helpful to know. And I just raised this because, and I think it's a very comprehensive, very well-done after-action report, is the one fairly light responses in and around the impact of businesses and the challenge with getting money out for the grants for the Small Business Support And I think that may be a place where we could, you know, post this receipt of this after-action report, solicit additional information back, maybe some recommendations and scrutiny, and then continue, and, you know, and adopt that, if possible, implement that as part of our efforts to be better. So, I just wanted to share that. That's my question and statement.
Well, good points. I mean, we all, at that point in time, were striving to get our businesses as much grants as they can, as much services as they can, as much information as you can. When I heard that we just need to communicate more, I'm like, oh my gosh. Every single email every day felt like another communication coming from the state and the county and the cities and so forth. But at this point, I joke, but there wasn't enough, there'll never be enough communication, there'll never be enough of the funding to get us to where we needed to be at that point in time. One thing I did want to ask is, I saw in the comments, the task force to dedicate to public health order enforcement, a task force just to look at our policies and procedures to make sure they're up to speed. And I think that that's where our community can also help us as well in making sure that we're ready and aligned. I know we do that, but with every disaster, we always look at our policies to make sure something's not missing. And so, also to be so nimble, those grants that you were talking about, for us to send out all those checks was very hard, and we had a partner with VCCF to get that done and so forth. So, looking at those type of procedures so that we're more nimble when we get a state of emergency declaration. We've got it down for FEMA and so forth with fires. It's like a check-the-box kind of thing. But I appreciate bringing that up in here and seeing how as staff and our departments, how we run smoother to roll out these type of procedures. I thought that was something that was stated that I really did appreciate amongst all of the other stuff. Apologize. Any other supervisors before we go to public comment? Okay. Do you have one supervisor, pardon?
I do.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure where to start, but I don't have a lot of questions, but as far as communications, I think people didn't share information, even though they were told by maybe the county, some of the information, it just didn't trickle down, and therefore it couldn't trickle down to a resident or a business owner, because it just didn't, it just kind of stayed where it was, in my opinion. Now, I wasn't in this role, so different role, so it was, I wore a different hat when I did this survey, which I made real clear, being a mayor versus being a supervisor, so it's from a different perspective. But I think there was a lot of confusion between state and federal guidelines during this process. I do think that based on the ways we could be better, the list that you came up with, I think that would be great to have EOC and SAVAD and others really review that, because there are some things like clarifying the CEO's role. That's really critically important. More collaboration maybe for some of those decisions, so it's not left to one person, and then be able to make decisions without waiting for a county board of supervisors meeting. Some of those ideas as well. I think it would have been important to know the difference between what the state was telling you, what the feds were telling you, and then was it different from what the county was telling you? But this is just, again, from one small-city perspective. I did appreciate the employees here at the county being really honest with their answers, because I think that's really going to help us. I really, the honesty just came shining through on their ideas, very good comments that they made. There was an awful lot of reading, so you obviously did a lot of writing along the way, because I think that was the largest read I've done since I've been on the supervisors' board. Did the City of Thousand Oaks not participate? Because when I opened up page four, it says acknowledgements, but they don't mention the City of Thousand Oaks. So, I thought that was either they left them off or they didn't, I'm not sure.
So, I don't know if you heard that, the city did not attend any of the facilitated discussions, and however they may have responded to the survey, the surveys were anonymous, so we are unsure.
Okay, I just was curious about that, because it's a pretty large population.
They were invited.
The disaster service worker, where every employee within the county, when they get hired, they sign a waiver that says they are now a disaster service worker? I think, I think there needs to be more reminders on that, because if you started 25 years ago at the county, you might have forgotten that, that you signed that waiver. I don't know. But that could be possibly, you know, when you think about earthquake training, and we all kind of go through that, maybe once a year, reminded of what to do during an earthquake, maybe we could have something similar to that for this very thing. I know somebody that told me, reminded me again the other day, when I said, oh, we finally have our after-action report, can't wait to dive into it, read it all, and read everything, every line. In fact, some of it was so sad to read some of the comments, kind of heartbreaking. But one of them was, this person said, I didn't see it in the report, but they couldn't get baby formula during this crisis. I didn't actually see that in the document. I tried to find it, but I didn't see it. I don't know if they did the survey, but I don't think anybody should ever be deprived of baby formula during an emergency crisis like this, but I thought I'd just throw that in. But I really do feel we should be tackling those items on here, because, I mean, we've had a lot of crises between floods and fires and COVID, and so I really think we should be really seriously looking at this so that when there is the next disaster, we're even more prepared. So, that's comments for now.
And then also, Matt Carroll is in the audience. He's done quite a few. How many after-action reports have you done?
Four.
Okay. So, I say that, one, you retired and you're still working here. So, we've kind of brought you back because of your experience, and I really do appreciate that. But I wanted also the board to know how many action reports you've done, because I think that provides also a stability and a third-party check, and that's how I look at it. And I saw Patrick Maynard here, who was at the forefront with everything, and so many different department heads. Just wanted to say appreciation is huge, Steve Carroll. Yeah, when you're on speed dial with people on disasters, it's an important one, Rego's here, yeah.
Can I have one more question?
Go ahead.
I'm trying to determine, when we had these regulations placed upon us, where they came from. Who would I go to if I had this question? Who is it? Federal? Was it state? Or was it something the county came up with? So, who would I go to to get the answer to that?
Yeah, so we generally followed the state orders and public health guidance from the state, so we were in alignment with that.
But not in every case? Not in every way?
In most every case, in most ways.
So, who would I go to ask those very specific questions without asking it right here, right now?
You could reach out to public health, to Rego.
Okay.
Roberto Vargas, who's here.
Okay. Right, and if also on the state regulation, if I recall, and Rego probably knows this even better than I, is there's a state public health website, and it had every single county and what the state was, and what the federal was, and the classification of that. And so, it really broke down the differences per county and what the ordinances were. And then also, the state of California sends out their emails and updates on their pages as well, just, you know. And then also the state of California sends out their emails and updates on their pages as well, just, you know.
I could, I could talk for hours on that one, but you know, I'm going to do more work on that.
Yeah. And, and that's a really good question because you're not the only one that has that question. Many of our community members have those questions, is who came up with rules and regulations? And when did declarations come and all that kind of stuff?
Well, there was times when the county was blamed for things that it wasn't responsible for. And, and I mean, there would be a business that said they were following the federal, federal guidelines when other businesses were following the state guidelines. So that's when a lot of confusion started to occur. And therefore that's why the county was being blamed for certain things. I noticed it when I was reading through the documents. The county wasn't responsible for that, but everybody thinks the county was responsible for it. So that was why it was so important to read every single page in this document to, to have a good interpretation.
Well, and that's also just in elaborating on that, that's, the county did not close schools. That's a different department for the state. There's a lot of different things that are going on that were not in the county's purview, but was state purview or a federal purview. And that's just even, or city. So as a resident, you're not, some would question, whose rules am I supposed to follow? And at what, which part? If it's a business, you know, I go here. If it's school, I'm here, but what about this? So there's a lot of, of confusion, but that's also education for all of us, I think, as a learning because not everybody knows that.
Sheriff, if I may, the federal guidelines, they were truly guidelines in, in a lot of cases. And with the state guidelines, they came out as a public health order. And we had to comply with the public health order. So in times where the state was more restrictive than the federal guidelines, we, we were responding, you know, we had to comply with that. So.
And, and I would add on the federal front, there also was the occupational safety requirements placed on businesses that and, and state, we, we don't have any responsibility for that, but those obligations were also on businesses. And so I understand the confusion, right? You're getting guidance and multiple layers and trying to sort through that as a business owner is challenging.
Well, one person did, I, I think more than one, but for sure, one of them said, could there have been a hotline? I mean, I know everybody's getting phone calls from everywhere, but could there have been a hotline? I, I thought that was a good question. I don't, I don't see that in here, but.
We did have a hotline for business assistance at the county. We have our business ambassadors that helped. And then also we did have a hotline for businesses to be able to call. And we put that information out in daily newsletters, on social media, and we send it out to all of the businesses that registered and attested. But we do understand communication, as pointed out in the study, is there's always room for improvement.
Like, I'm going to give an example only because I know this to be a fact, but it's, this is not really a business and it's not really a resident. It was a boys and girls club. And there were the parameters of you couldn't have, you had to have six, six foot distancing. So how do you put kids on a bus and keep them six feet apart? So that, those are the kind of wish you could call a hotline and get more detail on how to do that. That's just one of the things, another thing that would have been helpful for them to be able to call a hotline and go, how do we achieve this? There has to be other people being bussed, not just our kids, but.
Yes, the Transportation Commission dealt with some of those items, VCTC on spacing on buses and.
Well, I'm in that now, but I wasn't in it then.
Right. And that was on the hotlines too, because even just how do you stand in an elevator?
Yeah.
You had to, four people could only be in an elevator, you had to go face out, you know? So there's, there's a lot of different things that were there and, and listed. But still it's an education because a lot of people are doing this for the first time. They don't know where to go. So like for our disasters of fire, we went through it all one time. The second time everyone's like, oh, I got this. You know, unfortunately. So I, I do have to state that also. Yeah.
If I may.
Yes.
I was just going to say, if I may, I think because of the unique nature of COVID and because there was a, a great deal of dynamic agility required, there were daily communications that could literally change a directive that went out the day before. So in situations that are as fluid as that, it is extremely challenging for a government agency, a large business, to completely turn that ship three, two, four times a week. So as we talk about communications and saying, yes, we want to increase communications, I think they gave an excellent recommendation. We talked about for PIOs, you know, how do we make sure that we beef up our PIOs? So we could do something like every agency, you know, when we realize we're going to be in a situation more than 10 working days. Every agency selects a lead PIO, right? They come over, they get trained and they're disseminating information. They could help run a hotline and all those things. But COVID was so different. Supervisor Long mentioned fires. We know how to deal with fires. We know how to deal with floods. We handled an earthquake. A pandemic that is airborne, that we don't know the cause of transmission. We don't know the intensity and who is at risk of being vulnerable. That's very hard out of the clear blue sky to plan for. And when I think about, when I was reading the report, I think about the next pandemic, I can't fathom in my mind what that might look like. So as I think about some of the recommendations and I think about the manpower and the resources that it will take to plan for this unknown factor that I can't imagine, I have to go really high level, right? And say, okay, so what would a communication team look like? What would a COOP plan look like? What would our EOC look like? What would the role of the CEO look like? And I think that's where we have to go because trying to put our finger on what the next thing might be, I can't plan for a COVID-19 again because honestly, if it happened again tomorrow, we now know how to deal with that, right? I don't know what the next thing is, but I think it's really bringing our collective selves together and saying, in general, on a high level, how do we increase communication, transparency, making sure that we're able to reach all of our businesses? You know, you talked about the baby formula. I think about toilet tissue. Who would have known, right, that those would be the shortages, diapers? I mean, very basic things. Who would have known that grocery store shelves would be bare when you got home from work and you're like, oh, my goodness, it looks like the apocalypse? I don't know how we would have had the clairvoyancy to see that coming. So it's really the agility, the looking at who has approvals for credit card levels. Do we, you know, have a way to transition, transition where there's authority, where you don't have to deal with the PO? Because that might be antiquated in that moment and people will not engage and accept those. I think that's where we have to look at planning for the next big situation that comes our way. Thank you.
And supervisor, Correll? Oh, go ahead. Do you want to respond?
If you had more questions.
Just a follow up. But you, you agree that we should have at least a follow up meeting on, on this, on these open action items? Just to kind of put.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because nobody knew this could possibly happen.
No.
I mean, no one could have predicted it. I had a girlfriend in the military that called me and said, we're in, we're in lockdown. I'm like, what are you talking about? Right? She already knew that we were in trouble a few days before I did. So I'm just, that's all I have right now. Thanks.
And, and sad, sad to say, that was the case in many times where military knew before cities knew, state knew before cities knew or counties knew. And I mean, I was up in Sacramento, they're like, it's going to be coming to you in two weeks. What does that mean? So there's, there's a lot there and it's, it's definitely a big onion of layers.
Yeah, I think it's important to characterize the questions as not as pointing fingers because it was unprecedented and there was a lot of fear and there was a lot of heroes of COVID that, that we should, you know, continue to recognize our essential workers, our DSWs, our medical teams, our hospitals, our clinics. Folks were, there was complete chaos and no one knew how to deal with it. And that brings up my next question, which is, the recommendations, as I look through these are, are great recommendations. I just wanted to know to what extent that the constant associates might have looked at other jurisdictions after action reports to see how they in other communities or cities or counties were looking at adopting action plans. Are, are, are any external jurisdictions, recommendations baked into your recommendations for this county? And the second question was probably for back from Mr. Pettit, so.
I would say not only are they baked into that, but they're also best practices from other counties that we made sure that we made those recommendations around that. We saw things that were working in other areas or things that absolutely did not work. So we know that there might need to be adjustments to certain items. But yes, we look at the knowledge base that we have within Constant, not just our inner team, but we have a larger team that we work with on a regular basis where we all learn and grow together. We're able to formulate what are the best practices or, hey, we have a situation here. We're not exactly sure. How would we fix this? How do we want to recommend that the county of Ventura fix it? They don't look like LA County. They don't look like this other county that we're working with. How, what would be a good idea for them? And really just kind of look at your guys' political makeup, your geographical makeup, your overall social economical impacts, and what would be the best movement forward? We also talk to your planning team and say, is this something you guys could implement or that maybe you're already working on? So all those different factors go into those recommendations.
Thank you. So, so you did look external. That's helpful to know. And I guess the follow up is to Mr. Pettit to understand the recommendations here and maybe any follow up. What's, what's the timeline and the strategy for bringing an implementation plan back to the board?
The implementation plan is, is included in this document. So our, before you today, so our plan is to review those recommendations coming from this after action report and work with each of our agencies and departments and look at those recommendations that can be practically implemented within the near term to optimize our readiness for the next future emergency. And then we would return to your board should any additional funding be necessary for any of those recommendations to be implemented. And any other input that would be associated with those. But we are evaluating some of those plans and looking at, you know, the practicality of those recommendations. Remember this was a third party Constance recommendations based on all the data that they gathered and reviewed. So we, we are taking those recommendations to heart. We plan to implement as many of them as, as are practical to implement.
All right. Thank you. That, that's all the questions I have.
One thing just for this board to know is that our board at the time had sent in a letter about having the coastal counties be joined together. So San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara and Ventura. It was a very sensitive time and I say this because so much Cal OES, our group, our region, Ventura County has lumped into Los Angeles, Riverside, Orange County, San Diego, that was hitting issues that were not as dynamic as Ventura. And I say that because I want to make sure people know on a public record for anything. When we can do that and lump into a coastal region, I think we will excel even more. State regulations that were pushed upon us, not suggested, but made mandated on us could have been possibly, in my own opinion, different than say, Los Angeles County for closing beaches or some, quite a few other items. But because we were lumped into this Southern California region, we had to follow certain things. And so I personally would love to get that as a consideration on our state level is that we are moved to the coastal counties region. And I know that even legislators are looking at that as to what are the similarities on some of our coastal counties versus the Southern California. That's a, that's not probably in the report, but was going on in, in those discussions. Because like we've heard today, there's things that the state emergency mandate's been told to us that we need to follow, which we're trying to negotiate on the fly in Zoom meetings and through all sorts of different directors and so forth. So I just want to make sure that that was a public transparency, that that conversation was going on. We didn't prevail, but we at least were able to not put into place some things until mandated. So with that said.
And Chair Long, I think that's an area that we'll continue to work with our legislative manager and also our, our firm where opportunities arise. And I know through your advocacy, through CSAC, that we'll, we'll work on trying to make that happen where those opportunities arise with the state. If I could point out one thing just for the record, in your handouts, there's also a corrected or revised page 67 to the after action report. And it's on the back of the, the PowerPoint presentation. And the change with that is that it actually shows the decimal places before the decimal places were truncated on the Pacific Islander Native Hawaiian demographic. And so this updated page reflects that change. So just want to make sure that gets into the record for the motion whenever that is heard by your board. And I do believe we might have some public comments.
Yes, I see that there, is there one public comment or how many public comments do we have?
Chair Long, we currently have one speaker.
Okay, let's do that in three minutes.
Okay. Our first speaker is joining us today via Zoom on telephone, Laura Espinoza. Please press the star six to unmute. Hello, I see that you've been promoted.
Good afternoon. This is Laura Espinoza, president of Santa Clara Latino Town Hall. Please to offer public comment on this important agenda item. Excuse me, for purposes of assessment and future planning. We're a 27-year-old, all-volunteer organization. SPLTH contributes to the community through advocacy and action on local and county-wide issues impacting the Latino community, such as with distribution of food, supplies and educational materials during the pandemic. What went well? This was a wonderful report and I'm very pleased to have been able to review it. There was communication, weekly communication that was initiated by Senator Valley Group and South Oxnard Group with the Director of Public Health, Rego Vargas, and team members, Selfa Salsebo and others in the department. Short, creative videos using trusted community members were very effective. They were culturally and linguistically prepared. And there were improvements to flyers and posters and Facebook postings that came out of our weekly meeting with the Director of Public Health. Number two that we noted, small businesses in the Santa Clara Valley were provided with literature and vaccination locations, daily dates and times, and health and safety supplies. There were also small grants issued to these small businesses. Some of the challenges, to be totally honest and transparent, the deployment of county employees as first responders for outreach and education purposes was initiated a little late in the process in our review. It is also important to note that the county's bilingual pay to employees ensured that appropriate language skills were utilized. And I don't know why we put that in the challenge because that's actually a plus. It is transparent to note, there were some internal struggles in the CIO office that were visible from the community group. And I hope that that improves in the future for any other crisis interventions. There was no follow up with at least two major Latino coalition groups in the third and fifth district. So we were disappointed about that, but I do know that there was quite a bit of other outreach and that's very positive. I would like to highlight the incredible work of a former employee from the CEO's office.
Thank you, Laura. Your three minutes are up.
Thank you for your comments. And as we all put comments in here, we will be ever working on this. This is something that we don't stop. We keep, a county is better when we're consistently learning from things that we go through and make it better. So I just want to appreciate everyone's time and efforts on this. As supervisors, is there any other comments you would like to make, comment? Yes, Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank Mr. Pettit and the, working through this report, really trying to reach so many people and getting a, a full picture from every corner of our county and different, different communities and constituencies. and different communities and constituencies on how they were affected by the pandemic. But also looking at what we can do to improve. So it is very easy in hindsight to say, well, we could have done this better, and this is how this should have been done. But as, you know, we were all going through it, and most of us were in a different space, well, all of us were in different spaces at that time, very similar spaces. So I got to see it as from the perspective of a council member, but also working in a state legislative office and how that communication was flowing on different ends. And I think that has to be noted that there was engagement with our state offices with a lot of these questions of what do you mean? This is what has to be implemented? The order that has to be adopted? And I think that there were opportunities there to advocate for some of these changes and finding that flexibility and understanding that Ventura County isn't the size of LA County, but that isn't unique to the COVID pandemic. But just in general, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, San Luis Obispo County constantly being lumped into the LA County area. So that's just an issue that's part of all the work that we do on a daily basis. So it's what the recommendations that were provided, I think, has already been covered by many of us as far as what can be done. And what I am hopeful is not so much of looking at what happens in the next pandemic or the next disaster, but more so what are the lessons that we took from this pandemic that can be acted upon now? Especially with the communication with a lot of our non-English speakers. And that's just, I think, part of the work and engagement. Even with the business community, are they engaged now in general? When there's a lot of work that is being done, policies, legislation that touch the county and how we can communicate that with others? So it's, I think it's important to look at, prioritize what we can do now to strengthen the community, the county's presence and engagement with cities, communities, special districts, pretty much everything that the report covered. Before we even look at how do we plan for the next disaster that we don't even know what that can look like? And I want to highlight that, yes, there was a lot of tension at that time from a lot of communities. I know this boardroom became very political, whether in person or virtually and through social media. But I want to recognize that the efforts, as challenging as they were for a lot of different bodies to act on, helped save lives. And to look at the number of the total number of cases that were reported, and that may not be an accurate number with cases that weren't reported, that individuals that weren't tested, and the total number of deaths that were reported. The number of deaths really, I mean, we can't just overlook that in this process and recognize the pain and the difficulty that a lot of families face during this time. So just want to thank everyone who was involved in that process. I got to participate and be a part of some of those communications through the direction of our Public Health Director, Regal Vargas and Salfa, in trying to be creative about how to reach communities and how to provide that information and connect them to the status of the situation as it was evolving and working with our state partners in making sure that we were reaching as many people as we could on all levels. So thank you for that report, for the report, and look forward to the next steps on this.
Thank you, Supervisor. Very, very tragic time indeed. And there's no question that that's what drives us to improve. What can we do in the future to protect lives? We're pleased, as indicated on page nine of the report, that our mortality rates here in Ventura County were among the lowest in the state and nationally. And there's no question that the efforts of, from the direction of your board and our community partners, they helped with that, but there's always improvement. And so thank you very much for that. And thank you for your kind words. It definitely wasn't me that did the lion's share of the effort on this report. Matt Carroll did serve as our project manager on this, and so I'd like to thank him. And then, as you indicated, Chair Long, in this room, we have so many of our partners that worked during the pandemic to respond and coordinate every, you know, every aspect from testing centers, vaccination, centers, guidance, our business support, our amazing service excellence and economic development team, Gloria Martinez on that, and David, and then now with Estel Bousa there as well. So we'll be continuing our outreach to our businesses in the community as well. But so many of the individuals here in the room today from our healthcare agency, from our resource management agency, from all across the county public works. I think Jones here, she managed one of, and Dave Fleisch managed some of our vaccination and testing sites. And I make the air of mentioning names because now I'm going to leave some people out. But it really was a team effort. So, and our nearly 1,000 disaster service workers. So we're very thankful for all of their participation and the feedback that was provided to help us come up with an implementation plan so that we can make these improvements and be, and now, and starting now. So thank you very much for your support and feedback.
Sorry, we're not quite done. We have one public comment, but I'd like to, Supervisor Parvin, you had another question?
I just wanted to clarify that I could talk about all the things that the county did right, but that's not really where we're supposed to be focusing, right? But I will say, I was very impressed with how they were able to vaccinate people that were over 70 in such a quick time. I did receive a lot of compliments on how well it was laid out, how safe everyone felt. But it was, the food distribution also went very, very well. So I mean, things went really, really well. But I want to make sure they, if there is another, that it goes much better. We would all want that, I'm sure. But that was my only comment. So I don't want you to, I don't want county employees to think I don't appreciate them because I do. I know it's not easy. I know that everyone worked really hard. I saw it. But if we could be better, I want to be better too. So.
Well, and Supervisor Parvin, that's why we're having this good dialogue and conversation and not rushing it because there are a lot of wins. There was continually changing and fixing and doing all that. And so this is the time and place for it. We have another public comment I wanted to make sure we heard. So.
Thank you, Chair Long. We did get a lay ad from Gina Libby, and we've asked her to be promoted. So Gina, if you unmute your mic, you'll have three minutes to give your comment for this item.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Thank you. I really appreciate the discussion this morning about the confusion related to where orders came from, whether, you know, there was federal information or state information, city count information. This made it very confusing for residents and certainly for businesses. I do appreciate that when the county was putting out documentation about vaccinations and deaths, it was very clear and easily, easy to understand on the website. As soon as the county had to go to using the state data and the state information, it became almost impossible to follow. Almost impossible. So I'd like to make that point. Additionally, you know, when we're speaking about emergencies and what we have to do and don't have to do, that also speaks to something that's happening right now that I would like to bring to your attention. And that is that the World Health Organization, the WHO, is hosting right now this week and to be finally determined in May of this year, just a month away. There is an international pandemic treaty that's being discussed with proposed changes to the international health regulations. And boy, if you have an issue with centralized government or one world government, that is exactly what every sovereign nation will be subject to if member nations sign on to that treaty. And so I would like to suggest for anybody who wants any more information on those discussions, what's happening right now, to please see any publication or site for a person named James Roguski. That last name is R-O-G-U-S-K-I. James Roguski, who has been reporting on that subject for the last three or four years. One more point about the report. I would really love to see an aspect included because I feel like there's a lack of a mechanism for counties, cities, jurisdictions to obtain information that was available and to, you know, make changes accordingly. For example, in India, in April of 2020, two states, Uttar Pradesh and Delhi, introduced ivermectin use. And within six weeks, COVID cases and mortality were down 90%. Dr. Peter McCullough gave congressional testimony in November of 2020 about treatment options, and never were treatment options discussed. They're not a part of this plan. Treatment options were available, but now we know.
Thank you, Gina. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that's the rest of the public comments. I'd like to turn this over to Supervisor Laver. Your questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mike, and Matt, and Jessica, for this really informative report. It's, you know, we didn't have a blueprint. This is a blueprint, and we didn't have that before. And, you know, as it's been mentioned, this level of pandemic hadn't happened in 100 years. And why would you have a blueprint for something that hadn't happened in 100 years? But we recognize now the potential for this, you know, knock on wood, happening again. And I think we'll be much better prepared knowing that we have a blueprint in place. And just kind of an overarching comment and then two more specific questions. But I think what I, what jumped off the pages to me in reading this was it was just the incredible response of our county staff from our first responders to our hospital and healthcare workers, our professional public health staff, the nearly 1,000 people who are reassigned into disaster service workers. I tried to put myself back in that timeframe, and there was so much fear and so much unknown. And even with that, people just jumped up and started serving. And it really, we look at how well we did compared to neighboring counties and the state and national, state and federal stats. And it's, I just, I can't, you know, say enough about how people jumped up and started serving, even with all of the fear and the unknown at that time. And so I could want to publicly acknowledge that. It's been a few years, and it just, it kind of brought me back into 2020, 2021, and just remembering how hard people were working. I guess two of my questions relate to the actionable solutions. And as we kind of looking forward and we start looking at an implementation plan. One has to do with the digital accessibility. I'm curious if we can get a little more information, you know, what that means. Because I remember, I mean, it's been mentioned again, our PIO professionals were just working around the clock during the pandemic. And there was this unprecedented demand from the public for constant communication and constant information. And I remember, like Supervisor Parvin, I was a mayor at the time, and remember emailing our PIO team at 10:11 at night, and I get emails back five minutes later. I mean, they were here burning the midnight oil during a lot of the pandemic. And so nothing to take away from their incredible work. But I'm just curious, like, what you saw? We could do better in terms of digital accessibility?
This really speaks to the communication can always be improved. So with digital accessibility, what we were really seeing is that lower accessibility to those technology resources. Not necessarily the digital resources that were out there. You guys were producing a mass amount of resources. It was more the accessibility to the technology to be able to view the resources or just the overall knowledge on how to read those resources, how to view those resources, or accessibility maybe to the library or to the different areas to get to that technology.
So it was really getting that technology to the people that needed it?
Yeah.
It wasn't the output. It was just making sure that people received that information. That's kind of where you saw a potential correction moving forward?
Correct, and it was more with the older population.
Makes sense, okay. And then we've talked about it with our disaster service workers and moving forward, you know, kind of ongoing training. And I was just kind of curious how you saw that. You know, our CEO mentioned it. You know, if we have a fire or an earthquake or, you know, or COVID-19 again, I think we have a pretty good idea of how we need to respond. But the next natural disaster or health emergency is unknown. And so how do we go about turning to train people for these roles, which we maybe don't know what those roles are yet? I'm curious kind of how we see that moving forward. Is it just reminding people that they have signed this waiver that they may be disaster service workers? And then what does this ongoing training look like? Because I agree we need it, but what does it look like?
I was a public servant for 13 years. How many people know that they're still a DSW if they're not responding to an emergency after 13 years? They're not getting those regular trainings. They don't know. What is your role? What does that mean? You signed an oath, you said an oath saying that you're a disaster service worker. That means nothing until you're put into the shoes. And then, does that mean you work at a vaccine clinic? Does that mean during a fire, you're helping at a shelter? What does that mean and what does your role look like? And I think really establishing that knowledge base and that confidence within your disaster service workers before the emergency is the strength behind that. So annual trainings, really establishing that confidence. Having, I know you can't plan, like we said, we can't plan for COVID-19, we can't plan for these. But you can plan for, your role is going to be more of the shelter. Your role is going to be maybe more in med health. Here's some contact tracing trainings that we're going to send you to. Here's some different med health trainings. Here's some different transportation trainings. And really establishing those key roles and responsibilities for those disaster service workers, building those capacities and capabilities for them, I think is the biggest thing. Having some type of DSW, annual refresher and acknowledgement, you're a disaster service worker. Just saying those words sometimes helps.
Yeah, no, I agree. It's, it's, you know, people got just thrown into the fire because we hadn't had to deal with like this, something like this in so long. But I think that's a great point. It's a way we can be better prepared is reminding people about what their roles may be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Laver. Supervisor Gurre.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe as follow up on the implementation plan, we could get a little bit more legal structure on what DSWs can and can't do. I don't know if that's out there, but in the city of LA, the city attorney came back with some opinions after there was pushback of what we couldn't, could not ask certain employees to do to respond to disaster service. And it'd be good to have that as part of the playbook because exactly as Supervisor Laver mentioned, this is our playbook going forward. So as we discuss not only the training of DSWs, but kind of like what we as a county leadership team can ask people to do or can ask people to do, it'd be great to include that. Just kind of a statement more than a question.
We can look into that with HR and also looking at the law regarding the disaster service workers about, you know, government employees being DSWs and make sure that we have some more guideline to it, I guess, in any implementation plan moving forward. The challenge is, though, that we don't really know what the next disaster would be, what they would need to be trained for. But there is, you know, one of the things we did discuss in working with Constance and everything is the refresher acknowledgement to county employees so that they are aware that this is one of those and other duties as assigned that they could potentially get.
And if I may, I think that's a great suggestion. I really appreciate, because that makes sense. It makes sense to say, this is what you can do, this is what you can't do, in an annual reminder, annual refresher. I think things like making sure that we're continuing our Lean Six Sigma trainings, right? So that when they're pulled out to do whatever they might have to do, we don't know what that is yet, but they have the project management skills. They're looking at how do we reduce steps? How do we make sure we are as efficient as possible? So being able to build teams where you have people who have been trained and are strong there. I think those are things that are proactive we can do. I appreciate having a third party doing this because then we can have healthy disagreements, right? And so I would, you know, I'm still going to say, I find it hard to do like a transportation training, right? Because what if it's like an Ebola thing and we can't do transportation? It's one-on-one. You know, I don't, we don't know what it'll look like. And so I would be hesitant to invest in a lot of those very specific trainings, not knowing what we're dealing with. But do we need to be able to mobilize quickly? Absolutely. Absolutely. Do we need to be able to communicate? You bet it. And I think that's where we focus on. And then when that situation comes, then it's, okay, this team, your communications, you need to do this. Now we're seeing what we're looking at, go for it. Our PIOs, you need to do that. Our IT, this is what you need to do. I think that's a better approach and it's more using our resources wisely, not planning for an unknown that we can't imagine right now. But really liked that idea Supervisor Gurrell. Thank you.
And then just one last thing, and it's probably a question slash statement. And that is that the roadmap that we have going forward is a good one, especially if we adopt the recommendations. It's a playbook. The one thing that I've received feedback on this from my district in particular, which is always very vigilant about the protocols and the mandates that were implemented. I didn't expect to see it as part of this because it probably happens at a higher pay grade at the CDC level or even a WHO level. But to augment this playbook going forward for future boards and for future county leadership, there has to be some kind of an assessment of what worked and what didn't. You know, the closing of public spaces, the shutdown of small business, the shutting it down of churches. Did they work? And if so, to what extent? Do we know? Can we quantify that? It's been very politicized. What is the right resource to find out whether these interventions worked or failed? And then to add that to this playbook, so it suggests in the future that a future leadership team may look at this and say, okay, closing of small businesses did not necessarily work because we left open cannabis dispensaries while we closed down, you know, other places. And, you know, there was, there's a lot to be learned on the interventions that I hope it's someday when they're resolved and people can speak about them in an objective manner can be included in this. Because I think, especially given my experience having served down in Los Angeles and been a part of it, that there was an overreaction that led in many ways, in some circumstances, to economic insecurity, economic detriment and mental health insecurity and mental health detriment. And there's a balance going forward in the future. And there's a lot of people in my district in particular that are paying attention to those protocols. I didn't expect that to be part of this particular roadmap because it's a much broader global assessment of what worked and what didn't work. But that too needs to be done and that too needs to be part of this playbook. And I just wanted to make that statement. So thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gurrell. Supervisor Parvin, you wanted to make a comment?
Just one more thing. I keep coming up with more, but I know that a few years back, I was at Moor Park High School and they had a science project they were working on and some students wanted me to judge, you know, their program. And one of them was the Spanish Flu. Somebody did a full-on history of the pandemic of what they called the Spanish Flu. And I remember standing there going, I don't even know what that is. I've never heard of it, which is a good thing that I'd never heard of it. But to say that we don't know what it might look like, well, it kind of looked a lot like that, what we just went through, even though none of us were here, our great-grandparents maybe. But the thing is, unfortunately, there probably will be another pandemic and maybe it'll be 100 years. We don't know. But if there's a plan that we leave behind, because I didn't really see a plan left behind in, what is it, 1917 or 18 when that occurred? There was no plan left behind. So if we're leaving one, this is going to certainly help in 100 years, if that's how long it will be till the next one. But they do happen and they look very similar. Okay, I'm tired of, I'm done with torturing you.
And Supervisor Parvin and Supervisor Lopez said we all wore different hats. I'll tell you, I was proud to serve as your chair for 2020 when this happened, when it first started rolling in. And we did over 70 press releases in person and we got to every channel. We possibly could get to every avenue. It was a very strong pull on so many people here in how their life changed tremendously 24 hours working on this. The communications, the almost weekly, if not even more, to the cities and to the school districts and to all the different organizations and in multiple different languages. And in so many ways, and the frustration between what was coming in from the state and the federal. And so hopefully, maybe they will do an after action. The state will. I don't know if they'll publicize it, but internally, if we know, I think that's an important one for us because hopefully we can advocate for what we felt worked for our county and what didn't work for us. I think having this here today, the state can utilize that as well. So hopefully we can move forward. We could have said, you know, we should have, could have, would have, it's done. We have to move forward and how do we move forward as the better of our community? I do appreciate all the public comments and emails that we've received. Just as in voting, like we had comments today about voting and how that process is. There are differences of how COVID was handled in one way or another and we can't simplify that. People did die and that was very sad for those families. And what could have happened to you might not have happened to someone else. But what the process is, just like every disaster we go through, maybe your house didn't burn or your house did burn, is what do we do better? And so I just want to say thank you to all of our employees and all of those that we work with that continually are asking, do better. We said that yesterday a lot at golf thing, do better. And that's what, in a joking way, but that's what we do as our community. We work for our constituents and we are constantly trying to do improvement and constantly trying to be better. So I appreciate this and I think that that's, the recommendation is to embed our processes and to embed, do things, you know, as best we possibly can do. So with that said, I just want to say thank you. And Mr. Pettit, is there any last words?
I was just going to say Chair Long and Supervisor Gurrell, as fortune would have it, Constan is assisting the state with their after-action report. So I'm sure that they're hearing the feedback that we're providing locally as a local government and what our experience was and some of the opportunities for improvement with the state, both on the data front, which is very important, and on the coordination and some of that. So we're fortunate that they're here and they're a partner with the state on that.
If you're going to say that, I have to say, Callow, yes, I love them to death. And they've continued to have their updates on Tuesdays and Thursdays to all the elected officials and give the updates on everything. So they know that because I talk to them on the state level as well. But I'm just saying that. So, all right, so here we have it, our receive and file and staff recommendations. Do I have any questions, comments, motion?
Counsel, do they need to include in the motion the correction to page 67?
Oh, with the amendment. Great catch.
Item 55 has been moved by Supervisor Lopez and seconded by Supervisor Parvin. Please vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. It's a passionate item. Okay, does our board need a second? We're good? Okay, so we're going to move on to item 56, which is our 12 o'clock. It's a second public hearing regarding the adoption of a proposed amendment for the 21 to 24 memorandum of agreement between the County of Ventura and the County Sheriff's Correctional Officers Association. We have Jennifer Duran. I'll open up the second hearing.
Good afternoon, Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Dr. Johnson. For the record, my name is Jennifer Duran with the Labor Relations Division of the County Executive Office. I'm here before you to request that your board commence a public hearing concerning an amendment to the current memorandum of agreement between the County of Ventura and the Ventura County Sheriff's Correctional Officers Association to establish a 2% non-elective contribution to eligible employees 401K plans. If approved by your board, the proposed amendment will create a benefit that effective May 31st, 2024, and only thereafter in the third pay period of subsequent payroll years, provide an annual non-elective contribution to the county, contribution by the county to each eligible employee's 401K plan equivalent to 2% of annualized compensation. This additional benefit is in lieu of a cost of living adjustment to the pension plan. To be eligible, the employee must possess a minimum of five years of continuous county service and be on the active payroll as of December 31st of the calendar year immediately preceding the payment date and be scheduled to receive a regular paycheck for the pay period in which the non-elective contribution is to be made. This benefit was recently approved by your board for the employees covered by the labor agreement for the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association of Ventura County, Specialized Peace Officers Association of Ventura County and the management resolution. I would like to extend our appreciation to your board, CEO Dr. Johnson, and county council for your support on this amendment. This concludes my comments and I am available to respond to any questions you may have regarding this item.
Are there any public comments on this?
Chair Long, there are no requests to speak for this item. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? If not, I'll close this public hearing and hope for a motion.
Item 56 moved by Supervisor Laverne and seconded by Supervisor Lopez. Please vote. Thank you.
Okay, that motion is passed unanimously. Thank you. Next up we have is our 57, Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of the Amendment 23 to 26 Memorandum of Agreement Between the County and the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association. Hello?
Good morning, Chair Long, Supervisors, CEO Dr. Johnson. For the record, my name is Mike Kerno and with the Labor Relations Division of the County Executive Office. I come before you today to ask your board to commence a public hearing on the adoption of an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association of Ventura County. Wow, that's a lot of mouth.
So I will let you breathe for a second and open up the public hearing.
Sorry.
No, I forgot it.
Yeah, sorry. So, let me just back up. So I come before you today to ask your board to commence a public hearing on the adoption of an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the County and the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association of Ventura County and a second public hearing from May 14th, 2024. If approved, the amendment before you today would increase the number of supervising attorneys in the office of the public defender from two to four. This increase will help to better provide supervisory coverage for attorneys of the office of the public defender as it would deploy these supervisors into off-site units. Moreover, the two additional supervisors will be considered working attorneys as they'll carry a caseload equivalent to 60% of the highest caseload in the unit they supervise. Finally, the parties have agreed to reconvene on or before April 1st of 2026 to discuss this increase as well as consider whether an additional supervising attorney for a total of five is necessary. With that, thank you for your consideration and I would be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Board, are you have any questions? Is there any public comments?
Chair Long, there are no requests to speak for this item. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this and then if no further discussion, a motion, please.
Item 57 moved by Supervisor Parvin, seconded by Supervisor Laverne. Please vote. Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the hard work. Now we have our correspondence agenda of 58 to receive and file, if I can get a motion.
58 has been moved by Supervisor Lopez and seconded by Supervisor Laverne. Please vote.
Okay, so now we are going to go back to items nine and 10. That motion passes for 58. Thank you very much. And so we will go to Director, our CEO's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my comments for today are as follows. April 10th, Food Share had a celebration recognition drive-through at College Park. Would start out as a 90-day operation because of the pandemic back in 2020 has turned into four years. Serving food, a drive-through at College Park in Oxnard. It is a well-run machine. They are extremely efficient, user-friendly, consumer-friendly. It's amazing just the amount of food that they give out, all of the volunteers. They have 10,000 volunteers that give more than 40,000 hours in delivering over 500,000 emergency food boxes with 1 million residents served. So just amazing partner, amazing resource for our county. I want to say thank you to Food Share and all of the many volunteers that give of their time, energy and resources to help those that are food insecure in our county. Then I want to say thank you to our housing team on April 11th, Thousand Oaks. The City of Thousand Oaks had a groundbreaking event for their navigation center. I know the supervisor will probably talk about that more, but I really want to say thank you to our housing team for helping them apply for grant funding to make that possible. Really appreciate the partnership there with the City of Thousand Oaks. Then we had a couple of Boys and Girls Club events in Moor Park, Simi Valley and Camarillo. Last week, I was honored to go to the CSAC Legislative Conference up in Sacramento. Talked about a whole host of things, including artificial intelligence and how that affects county government, what some of the other counties are doing and implementing that and setting some procedures around that. Additionally, we were able to meet with our legislature and really talk about some of the challenges we face and priorities that we have here in Ventura County as we know that they are facing a serious and significant budget deficit. So really advocating for our county here to keep our funding whole as much as possible in the midst of those conversations that they'll be having. On just this Sunday, we had our Walk for Kids. It's an annual community fundraiser. It's family-friendly. There were so many different community members, groups, organizations, stakeholders, county employees that were there. So I really wanted to say thank you for everyone who showed up, who walked, who worked a booth, who volunteered, who helped set up, who helped break down. There are just so many people there to thank that were involved and made that day a great success. As many people know, this benefits our Ronald McDonald House charity that we have at Ventura County Medical Center, just providing respite and care to those impacted by some of the most challenging times in their children's lives. So really want to say thank you to everyone who helped make that day such a wonderful success. And even though it was overcast, it was still beautiful and it was a great walk. On last week, the juvenile facility, they celebrated their 20th year anniversary. Our chief probation officer, Gina Johnson, kicked off the celebration. There was a reception, there were displays of memorabilia and there are site tours. The complex currently houses about 60 youth and young adults either awaiting trial or serving out their sentences. And guests were able to visit the gym, the Boys and Girls Club that's onsite and they have a recreation area. And especially the newly opened tattoo removal space that is really helping young folks be able to turn their lives around, being able to remove tattoos from their face, from their neck, from their extremities. So really, really proud of the work that they do there. And they also had music played by some of the facility's youth band. So that's pretty cool. Tomorrow, we've heard some people talk about it, but tomorrow I just want to remind everyone is Denim Day. This is the third annual Denim Day to recognize sexual assault awareness month. It's a yearly fundraiser and it supports life-saving services for survivors of sexual assault. And wearing denim just saying you're standing in solidarity with those that may have been victims of sexual assault in the past. Then on Thursday, we have our first annual Bring Your Kids to Work Day. I'm pretty excited about. So we're inviting employees to bring their kids to work. We'll have a touch of truck event out in our parking lots. I know many of the agencies, I mean, Public Defender sent me an email of little badges they had made for their little public defenders in training and it's so cute. I mean, it's adorable. So really want to say thank you to everyone who has been supportive of this and who's planned really cool activities for little ones. We're going to have at 10:30, all of our, you know, future public service workers come to the boardroom. We'll have a special presentation and some raffles. So really want to encourage everyone to join in. It's going to be really, really fun. On Thursday also, Ventura County Leadership Academy will have their awards luncheon at the Sierra Center. The Alumni of the Year is Linda Rossi, the President and CEO of VCCU. Our Founder's Award is to Mr. Bill Kearney. The Nonprofit Leader of the Year is David Maron, Vice Chair of Ventura County Civic Alliance. Public Sector Leader of the Year is our very own Tracy McCauley with our Community Development Division of the County of Ventura. Then on Thursday, there's going to be a Fentanyl Awareness and Prevention Commemorative Ceremony in March. This is held by our DA. It will be at Ventura College from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. And on Saturday, Colab is having their annual spring fling. Then one quick thing, I just want to give a huge congratulations to Dave Barley and GSA. He won first place for a Lieb Kronberg Award in Excellence at the annual GSA State Conference last week. This award is for individuals who show dedication, innovation and leadership. And so it's just really good to see the work that he's doing, being recognized on a very statewide level. really good to see the work that he's doing being recognized on a very statewide level. He's led some really great initiatives here in the county, and we're just very, very proud of him. So congratulations to Dave Barley. Madam Chair, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. Next up, we have our board comments, and I'll start with Supervisor Lopez.
Thank you, Chair. Definitely been a few busy weeks, so want to add on to just the great work and the opportunity to participate and volunteer with Food Share at their anniversary or recognition event, and a really great partnership with so many community members, county support, city support. So it's just really a great resource that continues to exist in Oxnard, and thank you to all the volunteers. I also attended the Photo Voice Third Cohort Training Series for Community Health Workers who have welcomed in our boardroom in recent months. So they presented their observations, their projects, and I think there's representation in the cohort from just about every district. So I look forward to welcoming them in the boardroom in the future to recognize their work. I also attended the Diversity Gala in celebration of their tenth annual, or tenth anniversary of the nonprofit, where they recognized Assembly Member Steve Bennett and Celia Daniels as part of their efforts in working in the community. I attended the kickoff of the Emprende Mexicana Entrepreneurship Program, which is a program targeted for women of Mexican origin who reside abroad here in the U.S. to obtain educational tools, information, and training on entrepreneurship. And this is a program through our Mexican consulate office. And so there's a group of women who will be participating in this series, and we were able to receive some updates and information on previous participants who were able to successfully launch their businesses through, from this program. So I will be bringing back some information once the program, the current cohort is done later this year. And also, congratulations to the probation department. I was able to attend the twentieth anniversary event, as Dr. Johnson mentioned, and to see the tattoo-removal facility be open. As part of the CSAC Legislative Conference, I want to highlight two of the sessions that I attended with, in collaboration here with our Chairlong and Supervisor Lever, who were both also at the conference. The Latino Caucus invited our Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara to talk about some of the challenges that we're seeing with insurance, access to homeowners' insurance and insurance, the impacts of insurance companies here in the state. So it was a very, very informative session. And as co-chair of the Coastal Counties Association, we invited Jana Ganian, who is the Senior Advisor for Offshore Wind in the Governor's Office, who was able to hear from members in coastal counties and bring some updates on what is going on throughout the state. And she did make a point of, she just started about two months ago, so she is going to be reaching out to all the coastal counties, wanting to hear what is going on and what the interest is around offshore wind. So I think we'll be hearing more from her. This past Saturday, I also went out to Ormond Beach for the Earth Day Celebration. There were hundreds of volunteers who went out to help clean up, remove weeds. There was a lot of activity, a lot of families. So I want to thank Surf Rider, the city of Oxnard, and Coastal Keepers who organized this event, an opportunity to engage more community members in Ormond Beach and protecting our coastal areas. And a few more things, congratulations to the grocery outlet who opened their newest location in the city of Port Huaynimi, and a really great addition to this part of the county. And then congratulations to the National Latino Peace Officers Association, the students who received a scholarship. And I've heard, wasn't able to attend myself, but I heard our county clerk, Michelle Ascension, was a speaker, really great presentation. So it sounded like it was a great event, so sad to have missed that. And a few upcoming events that I wanted to mention, this Sunday, Oxnard College will be hosting the Third Annual Family Festival from twelve-thirty to four P.M. with a lot of activities, so I hope to see our community out there. And on May fourth, there will be a celebration of the Dolores Huerta and Cesar Chavez Monument that was, is part of the Clinicas facility located at twenty-one hundred Statham Road in Oxnard. And this celebration is, will begin at one-thirty, and we unfortunately won't have Dolores Huerta, but her daughter will be there to celebrate, and we will also welcome Teresa Romero, the President of UFW, who will be in attendance. So I look forward to that and appreciate the support of our board in providing a proclamation to recognize Dolores Huerta at that event. And lastly, yesterday, Gold Coast Medical Managed Care Commission, we met, and just wanted to mention one of the items and one of the steps that the commission is taking and through the agency, they will be opening up a call center, and this is the first time that the call center will be located at Gold Coast Health Plan. And the center will have twenty-two representatives with hours eight to six. So I know that some of our offices do get calls about their medical benefits, so I think this will be a really great resource and really working to connect and better serve beneficiaries. So just wanted to highlight that. And lastly, I have submitted my list of individuals that I request we adjourn in memory of. Thank you for the long presentation, Chair.
No, thank you Supervisor Lopez, for all that you're doing. There's a lot going on. I'm sure we'll hear more from the other supervisors. Supervisor Parvin, please.
Let's see, it has been a lot in two-week period. I, along with the District Fourteen, participated in two collaborated events with a nonprofit called Operation Warm. We are facilitating the distribution of five thousand pairs of shoes and four thousand pairs of socks to help students TK through third grade in the Simi Valley and Moore Park Unified School Districts with the help of other local nonprofits. Takes a lot of time to get those shoes on those kids, so we need all the help we can get. I attended Royal High School's Ninth Annual Pass and Review, which is their Air Force Junior ROTC program. The cadets compete amongst each other performing traditional military drills. They work so hard all year perfecting those skills, and let me tell you, it is not easy to judge that event. It's very difficult. I was the guest speaker for the class of twenty-twenty-four Leadership in Simi Valley Program, where I provided them an update on economic development activities within District Four, as well as Ventura County. I also attended the Moore Park Police and CHP Open House at the Moore Park Police Services Station. Simi Valley Police Department also participated, so it was really, believe it or not, a fun family event, because we had all the kids riding bikes around cones. So I mean, it really was a lot of fun. I, along with a couple of District Fourteen members, Barry Fisher, Mike Court, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Denning, I'm not going to name everybody, but Savette already mentioned it, that we all went to the Boys and Girls Club of Moore Park Simi Valley Annual Gala. It was a great event for a great cause. Thank you for being able to be there. Sorry you didn't miss it last year, so I was really glad you were able to make it. I participated in a meeting with the Department of Toxic Substance Control, along with the Parents Against Santa Susana Field Laboratory, to discuss Area One burn pit. Participated in a meeting with Cuyagus Municipal Water District Leadership Team, where they, we were all discussing the supplemental water supply from Ventura County, upcoming water rates from the Metropolitan Water District, which I'm sure everybody in your district is talking about as well. Cybersecurity, of course, I get nervous when it comes to things like that, so of course I had to talk about that, ask questions. Their long-term goals and objectives for Cuyagus. Met with executives and engineers from Aerojet Rocketdyne, yes, not in my district, but they did send out an invite. I said yes, I couldn't wait to go. We were provided a tour of the plant and learned from their engineers how to make rocket nozzles, and now I can build a rocket nozzle. Just kidding, I can't do it. But they also shared their goals for space travel and how we will one day have an opportunity to live on the moon, or perhaps Mars. And there's a reason why I went to meet with them, and I'm sure you can figure it out. But I'm not going to tell you out loud, because I don't want any competitors chiming in. But I attended the Ventura County Fire Department Awards Ceremony with Supervisor Gorrell, and the rest of you were in Sacramento working, so we had your back at this event. Right? Participated in the Rotary Club of Moore Park's meeting, where we honored law enforcement. Moore Park Sheriff's Deputy Gilroy and CHP Officer Osterhout. Deputy Gilroy is now being transferred to the Sheriff's Homeless Task Force this week. I can't tell you how wonderful a person that he is, so I'm sure he's going to be really great on that team. Yesterday, I volunteered for registration at the Third Annual Battle of the Badges Golf Tournament, Sheriff and Fire, and no one's admitting who won, who lost, but I know there's a winner somewhere in there. Also, other meetings included, met with the nonprofit Forever Found, honored a Teacher of the Year, Kirsten Riddick, attended the Simi Valley Chamber Networking Meeting sponsored by WM, attended a Moore Park Chamber Breakfast sponsored by Schneider's and Associates, LLP. Staff also attended a quarterly homeless resource coordination meeting, where they focused on veteran services. I met with members of the Gold Coast Health Plan. I participated in a Treasury Oversight Committee meeting and the Local Agency Formation Commission meeting, and we will be advertising for two open positions under the public members position in the near future, so stay tuned if you're interested in becoming a Commissioner on LAFGO. Attended the Ventura County Cattlemen's Association barbecue. Also, on April thirtieth, we're going to be holding a community meeting to discuss the importance of having a family justice center in East County. The meeting, again, is on April thirtieth, and it will begin at six-thirty P.M., and it's over at seven-thirty P.M. We don't want to take too much of your time, but we do want to share all the great information with you. The Simi Valley Chamber of Commerce will be holding their street fair at nine A.M. to four P.M. Let's see, that is going to be, when is that going to be? I don't have it on here. Oh, May fourth. Found it. It's always very well-attended. They have over ten thousand people that come to that. Frankly, the coolest thing I bought in the past few years is a thing that I can cook baked potatoes in, in my microwave, and this lady made it. So I mean, these are great things you can find at this place. And lastly, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in memory of the individuals on the list provided to the clerk of the board. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Parvin and Supervisor Gorrell.
Thank you. I attended an event where we commemorated, the city of Thousand Oaks held a ceremonial groundbreaking event for the navigation center. Dr. Johnson, Jennifer Harkey, we all attended the event, represented the county there. The navigation center is located at twelve oh five Lawrence Drive, and is going to be a center for developing individual navigation plans and support services, and ultimately housing for unsheltered members of the community, to ultimately transition to more permanent environment, permanent housing. I attended the State of the Schools address by Dr. Mark McLaughlin, our Superintendent of Caneo Valley Unified School District. He delivered comments on the state of the public schools. He celebrated recent accomplishments, and there are a lot of them, both academic and athletic at the schools, are doing great things. And he showcased the plans for the district moving into the future. It was a great presentation by Mark. I held sidewalk office hours out in the community. I did so most recently at the Historia Bakery Cafe, located at eleven East Hillcrest Avenue in Thousand Oaks. I met with constituents in our community, and they came by to discuss local events or to open up tickets. And we engaged with a lot of folks and got to meet the owners of Historia Bakery, really engaged local small business owners, and it was nice to be with them for the afternoon. I want to congratulate Newberry Park High School teacher Rich Bateman, being Teacher of the Month for the school district. Congratulations to Rich. My staff was there to recognize him. Commendations were also given out by my office at the Oak Park Unified School District Board meeting to the Oak Park High School Varsity Basketball Team and the Oak Park Varsity Soccer Team, because of their respective championship wins at the CIF League, and they're just doing great things academically and athletically up there at Oak Park. I attended the Ventura County Fire Department Awards Ceremony with Supervisor Parvin. That was at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library, it was standing room only, all kinds of family members there. The board, we presented on behalf of the board commendation to the awardees and congratulated the recipients, took pictures with them, and it was very heartwarming. A lot of heartstrings were plucked at that particular event for our local heroes. I spoke at the Ventura County Recycling Market Development Zone Event. It was yesterday at Manah Caneo Valley, Caneo Valley Food Bank. They've got a relatively new location there, but they received a grant that was leveraged through the Ventura County Recycling Market Development Zone using CalRecycle money. That grant is going to help them build out a new kitchen, and that kitchen is going to allow them, for the first time, to rescue prepared food from restaurants in the Caneo Valley area, so that that prepared food doesn't go to waste, and it can be utilized for those in, all over the county, but primarily in the East County, for those experiencing food insecurity. Anyhow, it was a great event, and it shows, you know, just the tenacity of our local community business, community organizations that are out there, you know, helping people most at need every single day. They have thirty different volunteers that work there. They have three full-time workers with special needs. It's a great organization if you have a chance to go meet it, meet with them. I want to congratulate the mock trial team from Trinity Pacific Christian High School in District Two for winning the state competition, beating out thirty other California schools. The coach, Dara Murphy, celebrated the team of nine who won the trophy, and they'll be watching, will be watching from the sidelines, because they are now on their way to the national championship in Delaware to compete, and that's May three and May four, so stand by for those details, we're giving them all of our support. I'd like to ask the board to close in memory and adjourn in memory of those that I provided for the clerk, and with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Gorrell and Supervisor Lever.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Johnson mentioned her, but I really want to congratulate Tracy McCauley, who's in our CEO's office and just doing incredible work on the issue of affordable housing in the community, and really excited to see her get this well-deserved award, the Public Sector Leader of the Year. So congratulations, Tracy. Really happy to see this. It's been mentioned by several of my colleagues, but I was able to join them in Sacramento for a few days last week, and we tag teamed, because we didn't want any Brown Act violations, but we were able to meet with four of our state legislative leaders in the Assembly and the Senate, and really spent some quality time with them, going over the county priorities, county concerns, specifically around some of the funding that we're seeing open up in the state, and obviously the budget deficit, which concerns many of us. But it was a really good time spent with all four of the legislative leaders, and I really appreciated their time and their listening to us and trying to really work with us at the county level to get us the support and the funding we need. That, you mentioned Supervisor, Dr. Johnson mentioned the DA's event at Ventura College tomorrow, or sorry, Thursday. It should be a great chance to get together and talk about fentanyl and also Crime Victims' Rights Week. And then I would just ask that we adjourn in honor of those on the list I provided to the clerk. I'd like to briefly mention some of them. One is Joanne Elizabeth Bowie, who was a longtime respected educator, almost a thirty-year teaching career at both Point Setti and Mountain Schools of Ventura, and just left a really indelible mark on the lives of the hundreds and hundreds of students she had through the years. And then also, we've lost a lot of veterans in the last few weeks, and I want to mention their names. One was Theodore Wallace Smith, a U.S. Air Force veteran who went on to a career with the FAA and then a corrections officer for the California Youth Authority. Joe Anguiano, who was a U.S. Army veteran, who then went on to open up a satellite office of the Mexican-American Opportunity Foundation, which is a program of the Department of Labor in La Colonia, and went on, had a long career in community service following his Army service. Leo Edwards, who served in Korea with the U.S. Army, earning two Purple Hearts and also a Bronze Star for heroism and meritorious service. Bud Gerding, who served our country in the Merchant Marines, the Coast Guard, the Army, and the Navy, a long and decorated military career. And then Michael. Navy, a long and decorated military career. And then Michael Stale, who was a U.S. Army Veteran, was serving in the Vietnam War, who earned also a Bronze Star for meritorious and brave service. And then lastly, some of you might know, we lost Dick Fawcett last week. Dick was a longtime successful real estate developer here in both Ventura County and Texas. But more than that, he was just so philanthropic and served on so many local charitable boards and foundations, from Livingston Memorial, the museum, the Economic Development Association, the Chambers of Commerce in Ventura and Ochsard, United Way, the Martin V. and Martha Case Smith Foundation, on the President's Council at California-Lutheran University, was just so involved in this community and just an amazing guy. He was preceded in death by his son, Rick, who was also his business partner, and somebody who was equally respected like his father. So we're thinking about Dick's wife, Marcia, and their four children and eight grandchildren. That's it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you Supervisor Lavier. Thank you. My comments, we did a great presentation at the Grand Jury on the April 10th. And we'll be doing a similar one for our county and my district at the Fillmore Rotary tomorrow at El Pescador. If you want to be up at 7:00 a.m., coffee's going to be hot. Good information. And then also, I just want to say thank you to our community that really just give so much to our nonprofits. Our Gold Coast Veterans Foundation, we had the golf tournament, fully attended. We had Ventura County Sheriff's Deputy Association and Firefighters Association's golf tournament yesterday, fully sold out, supported. We have Boys and Girls Club of Camrio. They had their bid for the kids' gala, and they honored a very wonderful person, Randy Churchill, fully sold out. Greater Ochsard of Port Juaniemi's breakfast. I mean, it just keeps going on and on of the great events that we are attending. But that funding that is going to these events are going to our community, who really need things for them to be doing what they do. So I just want to say thank you for everyone who's attending all of those events. It was a pleasure to attend those. I mean, here's another example. We talked about the National Latino Peace Officers Association. They had their banquet. Do you know that they gave 28 students in our area a $1,000 scholarship for going to college? Many of them had their brother or their sister got that one. You know, it's just giving back to the community in so many different ways. And so again, I just want to say thank you. Also, appreciate everyone's attendance at the California State Association of Counties. I remember when I first started, I think it was only a couple of us went, and it seems like we've grown, and which means we've been able to accomplish more, I feel. So splitting up and going to the coastal counties, going to the Latino Caucus, we had our Women's Leadership Forum, was spectacular. I say that because I'm really proud of the work we're doing as co-chair in really highlighting women in leadership, and how do we develop and support each other more. And then also, as AI, we have our artificial intelligence, but it's really not artificial, because it's all theories and numbers that we just figured out, oh, this is what you like. But how do we put that in the county world, the new things that are going on? We talked about homelessness. We talked about how we're going to get Prop 1 money for our Ventura County first. That's our goal. How we're going to get homeowners' insurance. That is not just an urban issue. It's a suburban and rural issue. And spoke to that. They're doing a workshop for our task force. And so I'm proud that Ventura County is going to be on that task force. We've asked Supervisor Parvin to be a part of that. So thank you. I know Supervisor Gorrell, you're active in getting homeowner insurance, too. So I just wanted to make sure that Michelle Guzman, who is our government liaison, she put together a phenomenal piece, which shows our work as legislators, what we need for our county, and put it in a simple page, so that they can actually understand and find what they need, so they can fix the bills or give us the appropriations or budgets that we need. So really working collaboratively with our state and federal legislators. So that is really an important piece, no matter what department we're at and no matter what party line you're at, is what is good for the community, I think is really great. So appreciate having the time with everybody to make sure. And then we also had the League of Cities there. So we got to connect. It was funny to go to Sacramento to talk to people from our city councils, from Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks and Camrio. It was fabulous, because it's networking. So we're all doing the good work and trying to get it out there. So I just want to appreciate it. And then with that, I will adjourn with those on memory of the list that I've submitted to the Clerk of the Board. Now, I would like to ask, we have two items left, and it's a County Council Closed Session items. Is there anything to report out from closed session, or can I close our open meeting?
Chair, you can close the open meeting. You can adjourn from closed session. There will be no announcements on items 59 or 60.
Okay. And so that's what we will do. We adjourn this meeting and go into closed session. Have a wonderful day, and we will see you at the next meeting. Thank you.